Okay, noting the time and the presence of a quorum, I now call the Acton Bucksboro Regional School Committee to order. Good evening, everyone. This past Tuesday, I kind of attended by through livestreaming, the Board of Education's monthly meeting at the Malden Public Library. And I wanted to bring one really great panel presentation to your attention. It was, it was a panel called, they're working on teacher diversification on the state level. And since this is one of our strategic goals for equity, I thought I would talk about it just for a second. This panel that was empowered by the Board of Education, they exist to address the persistent disparities in workforce diversity as a way to address disparities in student achievement among chronically low-performing groups of students. And one particular strategic action they took was to launch a pilot program grant. And that was $1.7 million in grants awarded to 14 different school districts to strengthen, to attempt to help strengthen on the local level, strengthen and diversify existing teacher recruitment and retention programs. So these grants provide monetary support to aides and parent professionals who are minorities, as well as recent high school graduates and recent college graduates and provisionally licensed teachers. They receive financial assistance and then they're asked to join the district and see if it's a good fit to work there. And next, the next kind of iteration of the grant is to identify recruitment and retention practices with long-term impact that they can scale up and to expand the number of districts supported by this grant. So I just wanted to tell you that, just to provide more of like a context for our goal for diversifying our educated workforce, which is not an easy task out here in the suburbs. But it's a problem statewide and they're working on it even at the Department of Education. So I also wanted to greet Nora Schein, who was elected as a Bucksboro member of the school committee. I had the pleasure of having coffee with her this morning. She's lived in Bucksboro for two years and has been very active in the schools and at the town level as an advocate for limiting screen time for our students and as a strong advocate for outdoor recreation and education. So welcome to the school committee. Can you clap? It's okay. Okay. So we're going to move to public participation. So if there's anybody who has come to speak to us on an item not on the agenda, now is the time to come forward and speak. I'm seeing no one. Do I? Oh, I do see someone. Yes. So we typically ask people who come to speak to us to say their name and their town. And there's about a two-minute limit.
Yeah.
And then if you just want to, I don't know if that's on. So if you can just check to see if the mic's on.
Yep.
Great, okay.
Okay, so hi, I'm Alex Condes. I live in Acton. And I'm currently interning with the town manager at the town hall. And he wanted me to come speak to you guys about a project we're working on. So we're working on raising social media following at the moment. And so, and also getting people to subscribe to the Town Newsflash. So if any of you guys are interested in following us, it's ActonMAGov on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. So yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Michael Chang in the audience. He is our student rep who reports to us monthly. We always enjoy having you here, Michael. So thank you for coming back again.
As you guys know, I always enjoy having high schoolers come up and speak particularly, even just be in the audience. But it does crack me up a little that school committee meetings are where you come to find social media followers. Anyways, speaking of seniors, today was actually the last day of senior classes. They have finals next week because the graduation's the week after. So yeah, but I think there was, it was quite emotional from what I've heard from various senior classes, courses. And seniors had, some seniors had a showcase on Tuesday, which I believe Mr. Light attended, with senior projects, which is a, basically an English curriculum where students can pursue part of their own interests with a community service element and try to pursue a longer-term project within school time and resources. I believe you're getting a presentation about one of those projects actually in 2A. Also, MCAS was administered to sophomores, the Math MCAS Tuesday and Wednesday. And that's about it. Graduation, in case you don't know, is on June 7.
Thank you, Michael. Item 1E is the superintendent's update. So I'm going to pass the mic to Peter.
Good evening, everyone. And first, welcome Nora to the school committee. I'm looking forward to working with you over the next few years. I think one of my greatest frustrations sometimes as superintendent is there's just simply not enough time to talk about all the great things that go on across the district. But what I try and do in some of my updates is just give you a little snippet of different things in different places that we can celebrate. So this update is really just more a celebration than anything else. And then I'll talk about something else as well. For, we just had a group of our English language learners visit the State House, which was very exciting. They had an opportunity to hear Jen Benson speak and watch an informal voting session on the floor of the House of Representatives. They also had an opportunity to hear from one of our state representatives, not ours, but State Representative Antonio Cabral, who is bilingual and from the Azores. And he actually spoke about the importance of being bilingual and how that influenced his, kind of his own personal journey through life. So what a great opportunity. I want to thank the EL teacher from the junior high school, Miss, and I'm going to hopefully say this name right. It has more letters than I'm going to do justice to. Kara Mortopoulos, right? Andrew, is that correct?
Kara Mortopoulos.
Kara Mortopoulos, thank you. Sorry Kara, or Miss Mortopoulos. I butchered that. But I want to thank her because she certainly put a lot of time into arranging that visit. I also want to celebrate one of our eighth graders, Daniel Mai. You have probably heard his name. He was just named the 2019 Raytheon Math Counts National Champion for the United States. Awesome, awesome honor. So I provided the link if you want to watch that final round in my update. And I'm embarrassed, I probably would not have gotten some of those questions correct. It was absolutely amazing what he did. So congratulations to Daniel. Another awesome thing that we do at our school district, and I think we've been doing it for well over 20 years, but just before seniors get ready to leave, they actually hold a Senior Community Service Day. And they go out and basically serve the community. The high school administration does breakfast with a lot of support from volunteers to be able to put that on. And then there's a day of service that all seniors engage in. I wanted to highlight one of those because our seniors teamed up with our Office of Teaching and Learning and our Office of Student Services and actually put together kindergarten bags for next year's incoming kindergarteners. And I gave you a list of a lot of the supplies that were provided to every incoming kindergartner as a welcome when they come into our schools next year. So thank you, you know, to all of our departments, but especially our seniors for taking the time to put those together. I also wanted to, as we start to close out the year, it's an opportunity to just thank people for a lot of the work that they do. And I wanted to take an opportunity and thank all of the volunteers that participate throughout our district and particularly our schools and classrooms throughout the year. This is an incredibly important group of people in the support that they give to our students and the opportunities students have. So I just want to make sure I recognize that group and thank them for all of the work. But it's also an opportunity to highlight a couple of opportunities that are upcoming who are actively searching for volunteers. Project Graduation is an amazing opportunity. And it's an overnight party that's put on for our graduating seniors in order to provide a safe alcohol-free event right after the commencement activity. And they are desperately seeking additional volunteers. So I wanted to put this plug out in this superintendent's update so we can get that out to all of our families. In particular, they like to have families from elementary participate so that they build a pipeline of volunteers. This is really a pay-it-forward opportunity. The second opportunity, the Parent Involvement Project, is also looking for volunteers to help lead some of next year's activities. I'm putting the link in, but there's a lot of different opportunities for people who would like to get involved in that. And there's contact information for those, both of those different opportunities. Finally, I, well, actually not quite finally, but I also want to recognize we have a famous person in our midst tonight. Dr. Dawn Bentley was just recognized by the university, excuse me, I almost said it. This is close to heresy. Michigan State University College of Education has their Distinguished Alumni Award for 2019. That's an incredible honor. And it's certainly a tribute to all Dawn has done in education and really pursuing equity, diversity, and more inclusive learning environments. So congratulations, Dawn.
Those lights.
Yeah. Well, I thought it was the Wolverines, right? And then, you know, similarly, you know, about a month and a half ago, I thanked the Acton residents for their support of our school budget and warrant articles. I want to do the same to all of our Bucksboro residents who were at town meeting. We had overwhelming support for not only the school budget, but both of our warrant articles that supported our capital plan. So, you know, really with that vote, we now have established a stabilization fund, which is going to provide a funding source for long-term capital needs for the district. But it also, the passing of the bond kicks off a $21 million capital project. And that is a huge step forward for this district. And so I'm just so grateful on behalf of all of the staff administration and in particular our students for the voters supporting that type of work going on across the district. So that was it. I purposely didn't include a couple of other pieces that I want to share with you in the written update because I actually want to send this out separately. You know, over the last few weeks, we've had an opportunity to have in a number of speakers in our schools to talk about issues of bias, hate, race. Probably about a month and a half ago, we had in Janet Applefield, who is a Holocaust survivor. And she came in and talked to all of our junior high school students. About two and a half weeks ago now, we had an opportunity and we brought in Ruby Bridges to talk to both the Conant and Blanchard students in grades, I believe it was three through six. If you don't know who Ruby Bridges is offhand, she was one of the first African-American students to be integrated into the southern schools at the height of the civil rights movement. And that was in Louisiana. And so she's most famous for that Norman Rockwell painting of the student being escorted into the schools with four marshals around her. And there's the Rotten Tomato being thrown onto the wall. That's Ruby Bridges. And she actually came and talked about her experience going into first grade to all of our students in the schools. What an incredibly powerful and impactful day that was for our kids. She talked for two hours. And there were probably 250 elementary school students in the gyms listening to her. And not a word, and not a movement. Kids were absolutely enthralled with her story. And it was a story of being brought into the school and then not only just being integrated into the school, but when she was, she was then actually put in her own classroom with one teacher and her and not allowed to see other students in the school because it was deemed inappropriate for her to interact with white students even once she got into the school. And she just told that story to the kids and wrapped that into this bigger message of bullying and how we treat each other and how you want to treat other people in the world. So what a great message. I just wanted to highlight that. She doesn't actually like you to publicize the events, so we're not allowed to put that out beforehand and tell people about it. But certainly now that it's happened, we want to share that with you. And then just this past Sunday, we followed that up. We had Rena Finder, Finder, and, excuse me. And she is one of the last, I believe, three surviving members of Schindler's List who lived through that. And so we did a screening of the entire movie at the high school for anyone who wanted to come and then followed that. And Ms. Finder actually spoke for, she said 20 minutes. She's in her 90s. And she spoke for 40 minutes, 45 minutes. It was absolutely amazing to hear her firsthand perspective on having lived through that. And to talk about the accuracy of the movie to what she actually experienced and just be able to, again, share that perspective with our community, I think was incredibly powerful. You know, I want to transition from that onto a serious topic. We also had a series of, or not a series, but a threat at the high school that was posted in one of the bathrooms. We have investigated that at this point. It is not a credible threat to anyone's safety. We've investigated. We're working on a communication out to families. We're actually currently working to make sure that we, we want need to make sure that before we release information about what happened, we're able to legally. And there's some channels that we have to go through and processes. But what we do know, it was not a credible threat to anyone's safety at the time. And based on what we have, it actually was not designed to target a race even though it appeared to speak that way. There's a lot that goes in the details behind that, which I'm hoping that we can give a full explanation to the community of exactly what the context was. But there was some context to that, which, you know, really, it shook us quite a bit at first because regardless of the intent of it, it is not consistent with our core values and not how we want anyone treated. However, sometimes students have things going on in lives where things take place and we need to be able to provide a context. So we're working on a communication back out to families and the communities. We took this extraordinarily seriously to make sure, A, everyone was safe. B, we could communicate what we could to the extent that law enforcement was comfortable with us speaking to the community. And B, we're going to follow up to make sure people know what we did and what we're going to be doing moving forward. I would say this is all part of what we know we need to do is make a broader commitment to all education around bias and inclusivity. As I've said before, you know, I am planning to start a superintendent's task force at a community level to be able to engage our families and community members who would like to provide input around how we can continue to work as a school district around race, bias, and hate and continue to work in that area. I also am going to be doing something for students. And we're working on the specific grade levels. But I want an opportunity for students to be able to communicate directly with me and senior leadership about their experiences around the diversity, equity, inclusivity of our schools. So just to give you a sense of, you know, what we're trying to do currently as a school district, but knowing that we have a lot more to do and we want to continue to pursue that into the coming years. So a little bit longer of a superintendent's update. So thank you for being patient. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Peter. On April 1st, at Acton Town Meeting, Town Meeting passed a plastic bag ban. The entire panel came up to kind of sit before us and there were presenters. And I noticed two students in the audience and so did some other school committee members. And we have a very strong, made us a very strong commitment through our policies to sustainability in many different ways and really have been on the cutting edge for some of the projects that have come out of our Facilities Department for sustainability. So I wanted to invite, it was my pleasure to invite, Isabella Harshbarger and Paige Kelly, two high school students here to present on, they were part of the panel presentation at Acton Town Meeting. And I have invited them here to present to us on the plastic bag ban.
Hi, my name is Paige. This is Isabella. First, I'd like to say thank you for inviting us. This is a good opportunity for us. And thank you for the introduction. So Isabella and I both took environmental science in our junior year. And we've always been really interested in helping the environment. But it's pretty hard to juggle helping the environment and staying in schools. So we took the senior project class, which is an English, half an English class and half of a class where you can do a project to serve the community. Some people helped elderly homes, the people with disabilities. Some people created musical theaters. But we decided to do the plastic bag ban. We worked with someone named Mrs. Platt, who has helped us a lot throughout this process. So the ban passed on April 2nd. And we actually had to do a lot to get here. It was really tough, but very rewarding. And we're really happy that it passed. So the first thing we did, we actually parked outside of three grocery stores in Acton to count each single bag that came out of the store, paper, reusable, and plastic. Stop &amp; Shop, Donalyn's, and Roach Brothers. And in the end, 65, around 65% of those bags were plastic. So we decided that we really wanted to do something about this. And then in December, went to the December Town Meeting. We were wearing these bag outfits. I don't know if any of you saw us there. We were handing out flyers and asking people if they wanted to sign up for our email list. And then we emailed, I mean, we interviewed someone from the Surf Rider Foundation. And this foundation focuses on cleaning up our oceans and saving our, like ocean shores. So we did an interview with him just to learn a little bit more about the harms of plastic bags. And then we did a plastic ocean viewing, which we viewed about 45 minutes of a plastic ocean. Then we had a Q&amp;A at the end with Mrs. Platt, myself, and Jamie Eldridge, who has actually been a really big help to our bag ban. He grew up in Acton, was really excited to hear about that we are raising this in the Acton. And he's actually working to ban plastic bags in Massachusetts. So he was really excited about this.
So we also had to learn a lot about the political process and what it takes to create a bylaw in Town Meeting. So we had to do a few things. We had to talk to the Board of Health to ask them to be our enforcement agent, which basically means that they would, like, when they check different restaurants and different stores for like health inspections, they would add plastic bags to that list to see if it was something that they could, like, get rid of and they don't want to have those. And they said yes to that. So that was a good first step. We also had to talk to the Board of Selectmen to ask them to, like, endorse us at Town Meetings so it would be easier for people to agree with it if the Board of Selectmen agreed. And they also overwhelmingly agreed and supported us, which was really good. And the next part, we had to do a lot of strategy. And we had a few strategy meetings to try, with a bunch of different organizations and groups, to try and get the word out about Town Meeting because a lot of people didn't really know about it. That was good. So we also did Facebook pages and a Twitter account to try and get the word out, which was really helpful, I think, and getting people to know. And then basically Town Meeting kind of snuck up on us. And we had to, me and Paige both spoke at Town Meeting. And I think that really helps people to see that young people were very involved in this. And they were very excited to see younger faces, I think, people there because there aren't a lot of those. And it was really late, it was 10:30 at night. But it passed and it was really exciting for us to be part of that. And in our next steps that we're trying to do after they've been banned, we don't want people to switch to just paper bags because those are also not good for the environment. They're, when they're made, they take a lot of, like, they put a lot of greenhouse gases into the environment. So those are still not good. But they don't stay in the environment as long as plastic bags do. Like, plastic bags are in the oceans and they stay there for so long that they're just a big harm to marine life. But we're trying to promote reusable bags. So we got a grant from the Grassroots Fund, which is an environmental fund for about $1,000, to print bags that we can give to people who can't really afford reusable bags because I think that's one of the main issues is that they're expensive and that plastic bags are cheaper. But we want to give them to people who don't have access to that and like the elderly community. And yeah, so those are our next steps. But yeah. Yes.
Do you mind if I put my question in?
Yes, of course.
So kudos to you. I think this is wonderful. The question I have is, is over what time period was this project? Was this a semester or over what kind of time period?
So it was a year project, but it basically entered us in April. And we kind of got started with it in October. So it's kind of been starting in October since then.
Well, thank you for your work. And we also have to convince Board of Selectmen to approve our budget. So the collection of boxes as well. Thank you so much for coming by.
Yes, thank you for having us.
So we are winding up our presentations for school improvement plans for the year. Oh, it's off. Okay. So our next presentation is a school improvement plan. I believe this is, this wraps up all of the school improvement plans for the year. So we welcome Andrew Shen to the podium to present the RJ Gray School Improvement Plan.
Hi, everyone. It's good to see everybody. Appreciate the opportunity to give everybody an update about the junior high school before the end of the school year. I believe on my little calendar in my office that we have 19 school days left. Not that the principal's counting or anything. But it's good to see everybody. Wanted to provide a quick update about some of the work that we pursued this year. Certainly not an exhaustive presentation about the things that have taken place here at the junior high school. But hopefully it gives you a snapshot of some initiatives that we highlighted in our school improvement plan this year. They fall into three buckets. One is related to curriculum and programming work that we've pursued. Some related to our ongoing school and district efforts within the larger category of diversity, equity, and inclusivity. And then some areas of attention regarding our schedule. In terms of our scheduling work, the main area was we really decided to pay attention to what we call off-team time. And for those who have kids who either are in the junior higher, have come through, are a little bit familiar with that term in terms of we have kids on team and then they do some activities in some periods where they are working with teachers who aren't on their team. And we noticed a couple of things that were a challenge and that we wanted to address specifically within our gray block period and related to that implementing a directed study period in a slightly different way. Previous to this year, this was the challenge. We have a gray block period. And that's a period where grades meet every other day. And if you are a student who's interested in our band, chorus, or string orchestra program, that's when you would all meet and participate in that. As a default, if you are not in one of those programs, you are placed in primarily a study hall. This was previously. Or there's certainly a smaller cohort who would also receive services. Two primary challenges with this model. One is if you were participating in those performing arts programs, you would never have within your schedule throughout the year an opportunity to have a study hall, which is something that over time we felt had some benefits for students during the course of the school day and over the course of a week. On the other side of things is that we were starting to notice, or at least starting to admit, that a 45-minute study hall for those where it was just the default wasn't exactly the best setting, the most efficient. The return on that amount of time, I think the attention and the focus on actually using it as effectively as we'd all want to would fade fairly quickly. And so that model was also a bit of a challenge for us. So what we tried, or what we implemented this year to try and address that was the following. You would still have during that gray block period, if you wanted to take those performing arts options, you would still have that. If you didn't do that or had services, we asked all of our off-team teachers, exploratory teachers, PE teachers, to create these elective options that we'd call as part of our gray block collective. So we had 12 options where over the course of the year, you would take three of them. So you'd prioritize, you'd say what you'd prefer. We'd try our best to give you what you wanted. Miraculously, divine intervention, everyone this year got their first or second choice. I would ask people not to expect that every year. But this year, it was great. The numbers worked out that way. And so that's what students would participate in. So rather than sort of having this default of, hey, here's a period where you can maybe do some work, we wanted to put some structure and some value to that period of time. In addition, we then converted what we had as a 20-minute silent reading period into a school-wide directed study period towards the later part of the day. And so what this does is it provided almost all students with a period in the day, and a smaller one, where they could have directed studies. So you could have band, you could have strings, and also have directed study period. And we do feel, and this is just my take anecdotally, and I feel like there's some legs to this. 20 minutes felt like a more right-sized amount of time where students could still benefit from that time, but it wouldn't be too long where things would get a little bit out of hand. And so that was our main area of focus this year. The electives, we wanted it to be a low-stakes setting. We didn't want it to be something where it was high expectations in terms of mastery of certain things. But really exposure, introductions of things that maybe students hadn't been exposed to and might have some curiosity or things that students had interest in and could pursue with additional time and additional attention by the teacher. When we think about our curricular work, really our focus was on a couple of things in terms of both vertical alignment, thinking K-12, what are the ways that we want to contribute to work and initiatives that really are district-wide and making sure that we continue to develop some consistency and some consistency with the work that's being done some consistency and some, some consistency with the work that's being done at the elementary school and the high school level. And then some horizontal alignment. What are things where we feel that across departments in the junior high school, there should be some consistency in terms of our approach or our expectations or our goals? And so I want to talk about three areas in particular. One is our STEP program. Hopefully for those of you who were, were part of the budget process last year, remember that we implemented what we call the STEP program. The STEP program is a special education program for students with mild to intensive special needs. And what we had realized prior to that budget process is that we had programming for students with this profile at the elementary school, we had programming at the high school, and so it was very important for us as a district to make sure that we had a continuum K through twelve where students could continue within our school community at the elementary and at the junior high, and then successfully at the high school level. So this year, the, the program was established, built from scratch for the seventh grade, has gone very well. I do want to acknowledge not only the teacher and the assistant involved and the students, but also the families involved. You know, we had this conversation with them at, at the end of last year saying, hey, we've got this idea. It doesn't exist yet, but we think it would be appropriate and a successful experience for your students. Take that leap of faith of us. And they did. So I really do want to give them credit as well in terms of the experience that we had this year. Terms of our math instruction, again, building on a work that's gone on for the past couple of years, certainly spearheaded by Deb, where she's given presentations to this committee in the past about some of our work in the area of math instruction, how do we build upon some of our strengths, but also how do we identify areas where we feel we can continue to improve our approach to math instruction? And so our math department this year really did a lot of, a bit of a deep dive in terms of that work and trying to better understand what does that mean, both from a conceptual point of view, but also starting to think, okay, how does that actually look in the classroom, at the classroom on a daily basis? And so there's quite a bit of professional learning about thinking about math instruction, thinking about how do we get some modeling about what that might look like? And so there was quite a, there was quite a few site visits, one to Franklin, the other, Brookline? Brookline. So there's a little bit of traveling involved this year and really thinking about how do we take some of the ideas that are being presented to us and how might that look in practice? And then finally, within social studies, science, and English, again, for those who have kids who have gone through the junior higher or are in it now, analytical writing is a big piece of our curriculum across the disciplines. And what we have always known but never really thought about doing together for reasons I don't remember why, is to talk about how different departments talk about the same skill within their respective disciplines. And are there areas where differences should remain, because sometimes disciplines approach things differently? But also where might there be some consistency and value in being more consistent in how we teach certain skills? So this year, we set aside a number of professional learning sessions for members of those departments to actually begin conversations about how do you talk about analytical writing? So for those who have helped their kids with claims, evidence, and reasoning, I don't know if you start twitching when you hear that term, but it's something that is very common to a lot of our students, or how do you use and interpret graphs and data in science as opposed to social studies, things like that? We started a conversation about when do you introduce certain concepts, how do you introduce certain concepts related to analytical writing, and where might there be some alignment and some value in doing things more consistently? So when we think about next year, we want to build on all those pieces. So for the STEP program, this year, seventh grade, next year, seventh and eighth grade. Excited to share, you know, Dawn and I have been talking lately, we actually are welcoming back a student who was in a, in a different placement out of our school community, coming back to RJ Gray, which is super exciting. And so we're building both seventh and eighth grade and welcoming more students. In terms of the math work, now we actually have to say to ourselves, okay, we think we have a better understanding of how this might look, let's pick something to actually give it a shot, see if we can take some of the ideas that we are thinking about and how might that look in some part, either in a particular unit or in a particular part of our instruction? And so that's taking place starting this summer, moving into next year. And in terms of the analytical writing, we've come to an agreement where depending on what grade you are, we're going to start looking at some common language. So in seventh grade, looking at the particular piece about evidence, can we find some common language about how to teach kids on how to identify good evidence, how to incorporate it into your writing effectively, and developing some common language around that, but also some common language around times when the approach should be different because of the discipline in which you are working with evidence? So that's some of our goals next year. And then finally, in terms of our diversity and equity work, those, that's an area where we have quite a bit of interest and activity in a number of fronts, but certainly one of the goals is to modifying our practicing, modify our practices, where we ensure that all students and families can fully participate. And two areas that I'd just love to highlight is around gender identity and about financial practices. Terms of financial practices, one area that we have continued to think about, especially as we use technology and platforms that are technology-based a bit more, is how do we think about families where access to technology may not be as convenient? And so this year, we started, we worked with EdTech to identify some of our Chromebooks that would have typically been replaced, but might still have useful life? And so we've set aside a cohort of those and created a system where when we knew that families might need some support at home, we loaned these out to students and families. And so eventually, we had twenty that were loaned out this school year. In addition, it's not just the device, it's also about access to the internet. And so we also made available hotspots where you, I don't know how to describe it, but basically sort of internet access through a device that belongs to us that we purchase and have, and so seven students also access that piece. So I think that's an area that I think we're, we're excited about, especially as we're thinking about the, the one-to-one Chromebook environment next year and, and making sure that there's alignment in terms of what we do here at school and also what is available at home. In terms of financial need, we played around with this year, other ways of also trying to find entry points for families to share with us information regarding potential areas where they might require some financial need, specifically field trips. I think one of the challenges that we all have at all school levels is the conversation can be difficult, and, and how do we normalize situations where families feel comfortable and give them settings where they can say, this is an area where we could use some support? So this year, we, we tried out a Power School question when you all have to register at the beginning of the year, and you have to say yes to eighteen questions. Well, we added a nineteenth. I don't know if it's really an eighteen, but you know what I mean. And it was sort of saying, hey, every year, we have field trips that over the course of the year may cost between fifty and a hundred dollars, and we know that that's something that could not be as available to families. If this is the case for you and you feel like some support would be beneficial, please certainly indicate so. And so we actually had approximately fifty families who took advantage of that question and gave us that information, and we were able to use that when and if and when field trips were part of their student's team or school experience. What's very exciting is I think that was done with the hope that came true, that during this budget cycle, we now have embedded in our operating budgets for all the schools, support for students and financial aid. So I think this gives, this gave us a bit of a preview of some ways that we might be able to develop some structure around that. And then finally, gender identity, if, you know, again, building upon the work of this district and the school committee, starting last year, talking about policies and practices that are more aligned to more contemporary understandings of gender, gender identity, the more fluid nature of gender identity, and thinking about how do we have, how do we have that reflected in our school in terms of not only our practices, but also our physical building? And so what we did this year is we originally have always had six single-stall bathrooms throughout the school. Those were always reserved for adult use, so we took two of them and made them single-stall bathrooms that were open to all students. And for us, it was, the way that we presented it and what I put in the last bullet there is presented with no fanfare, meaning we basically said, for any number of reasons, there may be students who prefer a single-stall bathroom, and therefore they are available. So for us, I think it, it met a goal or met a need that we, we believe is there, but did so in a way that again, to use that term, normalized, I think was important to do that. And I think it's gone quite well. I think the fact that there hasn't been any drama around that, I think is evidence or data to me that that was hopefully the, the right approach to things. One thing about next year, last slide, still some work in this area. We'd love to find additional opportunities to pursue this work where we highlight student voice and student engagement in terms of, along with the messaging that we as, with adult voices keep echoing and articulating, we know that it's important for students to play a role in that as well. In terms of the field, in terms of financial support, the field trips piece, we're still working on and I think we feel pretty good about, there's some other areas that continue to be a challenge and vexing. You know, in particular, I think about food scarcity. I think every school has tried to figure out how we can support students when we know, quite frankly, that they're hungry. Kirsten Nelson in Food Services does a great job, oh, she's here, in terms of the work that they do. She and I have had a couple of conversations this week about some cases. And so Food Services has played their role. What are other ways that we can align our work and align our opportunities to, to support those areas of need? And then finally, in curriculum, how do we continue to modify and adapt our curriculum to provide more opportunities where students and families see themselves, see their stories, see their perspectives within the curriculum? How do we also find ways to include other stories that introduce our students and families to experiences that are different from theirs? Eighth graders, eighth-grade English teachers, I'm meeting with tomorrow to really talk about that for next year, so we're excited about some of those, some of those things. I apologize for talking quickly, I told, I was told I had ten minutes, so, and that there would be questions. So, thank you, hopefully it wasn't too quick, and welcome any questions anybody might have.
I just wanted to say thank you, because as a parent of a junior high student, even one who tells me everything, I just learned what CER means. But it is helpful to have, you know, understanding around what is happening more broadly as a school, when what you hear is just a teeny-tiny part of a team experience or whatever, so thank you.
Thank you.
So with the STEP.
Program.
Program.
Yeah.
You're, you're kind of continuing into the eighth grade?
Correct. So the students who are currently in the STEP program, who are seventh graders, will go into eighth grade.
I think that's wonderful.
And then we're welcoming new students in the seventh grade.
Is it, am I right in thinking then that we're providing continuance?
Into the high school.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Maya? Thanks, it looks like a really terrific work across the board, and I love the attention to equity, and I had a pragmatic question.
Please.
About Power School. I find Power School to be clunky and difficult for me, and you know, I, English, you know, it comes easily to me, like, so in regards to Power School and signing kids up and the, some of the clunkiness that's built into the program, and then considering no Wi-Fi or Chromebooks at home, how do you help families?
That's a great question. I have two answers. One is, that's a good question, and I need to think about how to fill that gap, because I think the gap is there. We do have students and families where if access to computers is more limited, they'll come and usually do their registration in person. So that piece, assuming that they feel comfortable coming in, that is something that's fairly common, and that's where we'll go through the questions with them. So I think that's the computer piece, but I think as, as you're asking the question, I know this is what your piece is, this was part of it, is if there's a language issue, yeah, you're right, we need to think about that piece, too. I think Dawn might have an answer to that, because she's reaching for the microphone.
So there is the opportunity for families to identify, whether it's through registration with us in person or electronically, that they need, well, they need translations, first of all. We actually just translated the gateway this year, which is where new families register. So this was the first spring that we had it available in Spanish and Portuguese, which is the, the families that tend to register the most in-person with us.
Yep.
And so that was hugely successful for us as well.
John?
First of all, I wanted to comment with respect to STEP, that you noted that the success of the program relied on teachers, students, and families. And I think it's so important that, you know, while we're always trying to isolate those factors which are important in success, it is always the case that when we're successful, it's because multiple things have come together.
Everybody.
I agree. I think that's, that's very important. With respect to diversity and equity.
Yep.
There are a lot of different dimensions that you could talk about that in. So I, of course, will come at this from an unusual direction.
I'm shocked.
And, and that is, one of the books that I read a couple of years ago was Susan Cain's book, Quiet, The Power of Introverts in a World That Can't Stop Talking.
Yep.
And, you know, obviously, you know, we're blessed with many students, you know, who can go out in the community, we've heard from some already this evening, you know, who are very happy, you know, in an extroverted mode. Yet, you know, I am certain that we have students that, you know, really are deeply introverts and can be successful as introverts. How are we affirming their existence?
That's a really good question. I'm gonna have to think about the one, because actually, the reason I'm pausing is, and to your point, I actually recently did a small teacher survey, we've been talking in our school council about group projects, and how are they structured, and how are they organized, and how do teachers sort of work on those? And by their nature, really require a more extroverted approach. And so, and we naturally, I'll admit, I'm one of them, sort of assumes that is an important piece of the school experience, because we make assumptions, some of it, I believe, accurate, where the world in which they will enter more and more, I think, requires a skill set that involves kind of collaboration and group work. And yet, you make a great point about creating and carving out a space and honoring the fact that a more introverted approach, there's, there's a place for that as well. I'm gonna have to think about that. So I'm gonna acknowledge it, but not have a great answer. But Deb does.
Might be able to. So technology can help, right, and be an opportunity. We also know the disadvantages that can come with technology as well. But when we have used technology in places where students have time to think and then add their responses in like a group dialogue, it often provides an opportunity for students who need a little bit more think time and who might not be as comfortable speaking out loud in class, but who have really some deep thinking to share with their peers and with their teacher, we often find that's another avenue into their thinking and the use of technology. So as you continue to use technology, that might be one way.
I mean, that's a great point. And just to echo your concern, again, you know, when we think traditionally about class participation and how we assess that, you make a good point, because it more traditionally is about hands-up, voices, voices expressed, so that's a good point.
Any other questions? I just, I, I want to just applaud the, the extension of the STEP program, because I think one of the, I think I heard you say that there was a student who returned from another district.
There is.
To, to provide this as an option for a STEP town is really, most people move here because they want to go to school here.
Right.
So to make it possible for that to happen is really admirable, and I appreciate your attention to it. And I also want to, I also really, I like the directed study piece as well, I think that's a really important piece. I just wanted to know, is it very structured, or can kids get their homework done?
We tried a couple of different things. On teams, they tried a couple of different models with some varied success. At first, it was everybody on, because they go to their team teachers, which is great, because then they'll have access to them. Everyone does the same thing in every classroom. Over time, they tried to experiment in saying on team, this is the room where it's more group work, this is the room where it's quiet, this is the room where you might just want to read or, or have access to Chromebooks. On the one hand, that was useful, because there was some selection. On the other, you might be shocked to learn that thirteen-year-olds tried to take advantage of the chaos, and we didn't exactly know where everybody was going. I know you're surprised by that. And so I think from a management standpoint, it became a little bit of a collision of, of things. So we're not quite sure where we're gonna land next year, but, but I do think, at least anecdotally, kids said, that amount of time, if I wanted to get something done, I could. So that felt satisfying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Okay, moving right along, we have a third presentation on, by the School Wellness Advisory Committee. This is a, a committee that is legally, legally required that the superintendent oversees, and they do present to us annually to update the wellness policy in the district. So welcome to Dawn.
I always forget how tall he is until he stands up, so we're usually sitting at meetings together. So there are a couple people who are gonna present with me tonight, but first of all, we want to thank you, on behalf of the committee, for giving us this opportunity to share our work with you. And I have the clicker here. So the, this, obviously, this presentation was in your packet, and so these are the requirements under the Massachusetts General Law around what a school wellness advisory committee needs to do every year. And we're happy to say that we've achieved them all for you. And this presentation constitutes the, our annual report to you. So, before we go any further, we have to show that our SWAC has a, I'm gonna say SWAC, School Wellness Advisory Committee, has a representation from all of these different groups, and so you can see sort of the members. I want to give a huge shout-out to the folks who decided to join us tonight, because they had nothing else more pressing or exciting to do on their Thursday nights. So Sunanda Papala is here, she's a parent from Douglas. April Hirschberg is here, she's from RJ Gray and McCarthy Town. She was, oh, there she is, she's behind Katie. Ken Silva, who's a high school parent, wearing my favorite color. We also had two students join us this year. Nick has been amazing, and Alex as well. Katie Gorsika, who's the executive director from Danny's Place. We had Diane, a year school committee member. We had a few nurses, and the other folks who are here tonight, Abigail Dressler, our assistant principal from Conant, Kirsten Nelson, our food services director, and last but not least, Lindsay Rosenman, who I just call counselor, but she's got a bunch of stuff after her name, because she does a whole lot of things to keep us together at the high school. So I'm really thrilled that folks are here with us tonight, and I want to thank them again publicly for all of their work throughout the school year. So we sort of divided our work this year into three areas that were driven basically by two different things. One of them by the Mass General Law, which is that we have to review our wellness policy or, and procedure every year. And then the other two were driven by the Long Range Strategic Plan District Improvement Goals for this particular school year around start times and screen time. So that's where those come from. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Kirsten Nelson and Nick Carmas. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Kirsten Nelson and Nick Carmesino, who are gonna speak to our findings about start times, which I know you all read because it's really interesting stuff.
Thank you. So we're excited to report about start times. When we were asked how the later start time impacted the child's schedule, there was a positive impact or no impact with sports, downtime with family, friends, the morning routine, parents had reported was, students were, had the ability to manage, oh, I'm sorry, had the ability to manage stress and also had a positive impact due to the change in the start time. The takeaway from the high school student survey is that students are sleeping in later and that they're feeling more alert for their classes, which is great. And then teachers at the junior high and high school noted that students are more alert in their first period class as well. One thing to note is that the late start time has not reduced the first period tardies, which is a little bit, you know, that we've found out, which we're a little, yeah. But all groups that we surveyed basically feel that the later start time is just right.
Nick?
So based on the data that we collected, we have three main recommendations. The first one is keep the secondary schools at the same start time. Move the junior high and high school to the same schedule of eight to 2:36. And continue to monitor the three areas, early sports dismissals, bus ridership, and traffic on Charter Road, which was a lot of concerns from parents. And then, given the tardy rates at the junior high and high school, families should reconsider the decision to let their children take the bus because the students that take the bus arrive to school on time and the average ride time is only twenty minutes. And this can also help them avoid traffic and, yeah, traffic on the drop offs and everything.
And then next up, we have Abigail Dressler from the Conant School, assistant principal. She's gonna be speaking about screen time.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to present with you. Our subcommittee looked at how the district can help families in promoting healthy device habits. And for school committee members on slide 11 in your packet, you can see that our committee came up with three different strategies to try to support this goal after quite a bit of work and conversation with others. What we decided to do throughout the year was to try some of the strategies in the schools and with the community and with the students to see what felt successful so that we would know what worked moving forward. And what we found was that anytime we involved students in educating other students, we had the most success. And that really goes to our work anyway on promoting student choice and student voice in our schools. So it was really the same with promoting healthy habits. So for example, this year, some high school students went to the RJ Gray Information Night for rising seventh graders. And the seniors had a table with information and families and children coming to the junior high could go and talk with high school students and ask about cell phones and ask about social media. And the parents were interested in speaking with the older teens. So that was a big success. Something else that was really wonderful and came out organically was we were approached at Conant by some AB seniors who asked if they could come in and educate our sixth grade students on having balance with social media. And we said, fabulous. So they came in and they reviewed rules about social media, which were a little surprising to some of our sixth graders. And they talked about balance with school and with friends and with devices. We also sent something home that evening to parents to further the conversation at home. And when these high school children were talking to our sixth graders, they were just and raptured. They asked great questions. We had awesome follow-up lessons the next day with the sixth grade team, with the nurses, with the counselor. So we found that any activities that we tried to promote, if we involved our older students with our younger students, it was very strong. So that's something for us to consider moving forward. In our work as a subcommittee, what we really found is that we have tremendous strength within the district. Things are happening all the time that are probably going unnoticed, but it's very powerful. So our school nurses are doing a tremendous amount with educating students, parents, working with teachers. Our teachers, our counseling staff work every day on helping students with device usage, educating parents. And things are going really well, all in all. One thing that we'd like to see more of in each school is the work of our district technology coordinators are, is really fabulous. So Peggy Harvey, one of our coordinators, created some tech tips for families that we sent out at the elementary level. And she's revised them for junior high and for high school to be a little more timely for that age. So that's been helpful for families as well. So in conclusion, our subcommittee felt that there's tremendous things happening in the district for helping students and families learn some balance and how to handle these devices. And what we really need to do is help expand and widen this effort over time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening on such an important subject. And I'm pleased to introduce you to Lindsay Rosenman, the high school counselor.
Thanks, everybody. I am here to talk about the third subcommittee, which was looking at the school wellness policy and procedures. And what our group did was, we started by doing a school staff survey where we surveyed administrators, nurse department leaders and counseling department leaders and health education leaders from across the district to find out how the school wellness policy and procedures are being used and implemented across the various schools in the district. We received responses from, I'm gonna say, four of the elementary schools and then three responses from secondary schools. So we, we did get some sense of what's going on in the community in regards to the wellness policy and procedures. And these were some of the questions that, that we asked in our survey. And what we found is that there is not a lot of consistency across the buildings, particularly amongst the elementary schools, about how the wellness procedures are being rolled out. So for example, food, there, you know, from building to building in terms of things like birthday celebrations or food in the classroom, there's a lot of differences going on. And so that was an area that we wanted to focus on in terms of giving some suggested revisions to, to incorporate more consistency across buildings. We also were concerned that the wellness policy and procedures aren't, is not highlighted on school, individual school websites. And it's a little bit buried in the district website, so it's hard to find. So that's a recommendation that we have, is that we would like to see this to be better highlighted in different school websites so that families can know what the wellness policy and procedures are. And one major project that our subcommittee is working on currently is updating the, the wellness section of the district website. That we found that there were some links that were no longer working and that we really wanted to expand upon the mental health section. Actually, the, the current wellness procedures don't include anything about mental health. It was mostly focused on physical health and nutrition. So April Hirschberg, who's one of our subcommittee members, who's a psychiatrist, was kind enough to, to write a wonderful section around mental health procedures based on the information that we gathered. So that is currently what our group is working on, is updating this piece of the website so that it will be more user-friendly. And folks will be able to access resources around wellness in an easier way.
So there you have it, from the committee members. What questions might we be able to answer for you tonight?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. And I haven't, actually have had a chance to visit the website. But as a parent, and I talk to many parents, one of the things that, and many parents, because the success for a student is always the conjunction with the school and the family. And a lot of time for the wellness is the sign that the parents missed. You know, that, for example, vaping is a problem, but a lot of parents doesn't know their kid is using it. But there are signs and traces that people can, parents can learn to know that their kid is using it. Or I was reading an article about, actually, for the sex offender, that they're doing something. And there are signs that the parents can notice, that the, be able to follow up for problems, issues, or drug abuse, or anything like that, or anxiety, or mental wellness. I was wondering if there's any information we'd be able to provide it on the website for parents just to be able to learn the knowledge of following, be able to kind of start the conversation of some mental illness or something, issue, anxiety, you know, drug use, whatever, the problem the kids have. Because I think that would be very, very useful for the parents.
There is quite a bit of information out there about how to talk to kids around a variety of mental health issues.
Just to pick up on that thread, one of the things that was interesting in today's paper was some comments about Michael Phelps and the work that he's doing around depression. And, you know, people think that, you know, if people are achieving at a very high level, of course, they must be happy. And of course, that is not necessarily true at all, Michael Phelps being an example of that. But in the article, it also noted that the suicide rate amongst Olympians was high, which is truly tragic. So I, there is obviously need to keep the door open for these conversations. The question that I had with respect to screen time, there are two elements of screen time. One is how much screen time there is and then what are you doing? And I wanted to focus on the, how much screen time question there is because if screen time goes down, then something else has to go up. So one approach, of course, is to say, we want screen time to go down. And a different approach is to say, here's something else that you could do and I wondered, you know, what work had been done there. And in particular, I wanted to know if there had been any effort done to replace screen time with nothing. In other words, to take people in the direction of self-reflection and meditation, which of course in my youth, you know, I referred to and other kids referred to as, I'm so bored.
So that's a really great question. And I think a lot of our work early on in the, in the last few years, and there is information about it on the wellness website as well, is, and you'll see it sometimes in emails that Deb and I send out when we talk about PDFs, so playtime, downtime, family time. And there are, we did at least one edition of our newsletter that we were doing a few years ago around downtime and what is that? And what, how does it look different for different kids? Sometimes it is taking a nap. Sometimes it's reading a book. Sometimes it's going outside and tossing a ball. Sometimes it's doing absolutely nothing. And so between those types of supports and our, we do message that a lot around, especially vacations, take playtime, downtime, family time. You'll notice in the homework survey that we sent out, actually, the start time survey had data as well around how you're using that as a family. And challenge success, for those of you who took the survey because you had kids in those age ranges. Also, there were a lot of questions around how much, how much of that types of things. So those are things we encourage. And also, our elementaries in particular have been really working on reflective, they, I don't, wouldn't call it meditation. What's the word I'm looking for? Mindfulness, thank you. I'm like, it begins with an M. And we do a lot of those. They do yoga in the classroom for breaks. They do brain breaks and movement breaks. So they are teaching the kids different ways to sort of pay attention to what their bodies are telling them, which is very different. And we did a mindfulness class at the junior high. It was one of the new gray block offerings this year. So, yeah. So we definitely are working and thinking about all those things. But I would say we're certainly, we have lots of places to go with that.
I have two questions. Will you have specific recommendations and follow-through with various schools as it pertains to food and celebrations and, and some, you were referencing an inconsistency that I think some of us are acutely aware of, especially if we have children who cannot participate in food events at school? So that's one part of my question about food. The second question is, are we still, are we continuing to stretch ourselves for feeding kids who can't access food, you know, like, and I know, I just know that most kids who have severe issues can, cannot really partake in school at all, you know, in, in a safe way or don't have a lot of choice. And I'm wondering if we're increasing breadth around that and education of staff around safety and contamination? That's another part of my question. And then when it comes to bussing, did you guys, we, we are seven minutes apart currently, right, between the junior high and high school? How do we move to a precise start time that's the same with bussing?
Multiple ways. And feel free to jump in if you want, Peter, or I think Yeah, the kids, the kids are ready to go at eight o'clock. Like, the, the staff will say they are, like, come on, let's do this already. So they're ready to go at eight. And with the, with the bus loop expansion work going on this summer, the plan is not to do the drop off, drop off, but to, to basically have kids, I think, go in both directions so that we're not making multiple stops like we have in the past. And additionally, we needed to increase instructional time a little bit next year at the high school. So that sort of accomplished all of those pieces.
Larry, I'll invite you to jump in if you want to, but I think one of the primary strategies we're using is actually to reverse the bus direction. So students are dropped at the high school first and then the junior high school. And right now, the students are at the junior high school and they're, they're very early and ready to go. And simply, I think, just by really reversing that, we're able to drop at the high school, then the junior high, and everyone can actually start. Whereas we get into the bus loop that we're developing right now, and next meeting, JD will actually have an update on that bus loop for you and progress. But I think what we want to do is evaluate how those bus stops work, the actual distances, how far kids are traveling before we make any final determination about where exactly we stop. But that's, that's something that certainly we're looking at. Larry, anything else on that?
Not next year, though, I don't think. Okay. We'll figure it out. Do you want to speak to the food piece, or Kirsten?
I think that a, a piece of it is that there is a procedure in place, and I have it right in front of me, that, you know, birthday events at school should not involve food, that whole class or non-curricular, you know, celebrations involving food should be used sparingly, celebrate, you know, basically that food should be used as part of the curriculum, but not for everything. And so I think that, that a piece of this is having better publicity or more information distributed around what the, the procedures are, the wellness procedures are. And so, you know, we're asking that schools put this on their website and that also at back to school night, that, that information about what the wellness policy and procedures are, are distributed to families so that there's a, a better understanding about what the expectations from the district are regarding food in the classroom.
And Kirsten may be able to speak to that too?
And then as far as the food goes, as far as families, we work with families individually as well. We have a nutritional book. We've been working on our website all this year, trying to input all the nutritionals, all the labels for all of our ingredients and recipes for everything that we have. So we're hoping that for next year, we'll have everything digitally for families so that they can just go online and take a look at that and not have to make an appointment and come in and see the book and work through that with us.
So I think it was Abigail that mentioned there were the high school seniors coming to Conant. And I'm curious, because I like, I like that model. I like, I like picturing that, you know, the, the Conant kids having older kids to look up to, but also the high school kids having to be looked up to, looked up at. Where, where did that come from? Is, was that something that we asked them to, the seniors? Was that something that we asked them to, the seniors to step into, or did that, is that a senior project, or how did that come about?
Well, I have to give credit to Peggy Harvey, our technology coordinator in the district, she partners with the senior seminar course at A.B., and there were a ton of children in that class who wanted to educate younger students. So, some of those students banded together, and they had a table at the junior high to answer questions, some of them came and met with me, and we tossed around some ideas of what might be effective, and they present, they made a Google slideshow, and they presented it, and someone came and filmed them, so we can use it in other classes. It was so powerful, and we've done all kinds of fabulous things, I think, on social media at Conant in particular, but this hearing from these seventeen and eighteen-year-olds as role models was very strong for our sixth graders, very strong. And last year, we had an FBI agent and a federal prosecutor and Homeland Security in to educate our families on the dangers of social media, and I, we had a tremendous amount of conversation from that, but this, I think, was more impactful for students during the school day.
There's also, at the, at the high school, we also, thanks to Peggy and some of these students who were involved in this, they started a club that's a social media awareness club, so I think that that's something that we're hoping, it was some of the students who were involved in this project, as part of their senior project, but that we're hoping will continue at the high school, so that we'll have some peer leaders to continue to go out into other schools in the community, if they're involved with that club, and can help out with that, too.
That was, that was the next question, is it, was that, is that kind of a one-time thing, or is this something that might-
Yeah, so, it is, it is a club that started at the high school, so sometimes, high school clubs depend on having interested students, you know, to continue, but I know it's something that Peggy's involved with, and, you know, will be continuing to help to recruit students to be involved with that. I thi, I think that the bulk of the students who are working on it this year are graduating seniors, but hopefully, we'll be able to replenish, you know, the leaders in that rank, those ranks, to continue these types of programs for the elementary schools.
I hope so. Yeah. Anyone else?
Book buddies, yeah, iPhone buddies. Okay, we'll take one last question. Yeah, so, to follow up on the previous question, I was trying to actually find that information, and I have a little trouble, but the, if, when the parents look at the information and have some concern, is there any, is that linked to the procedures and policy, and kind of, what can the parents do? I was hoping that that information will be able to include it in the information, because that would be kind of the first reaction that, as a family, can do.
So, there's also, on the Student Services website, there's information for parents who have concerns about their students, and the other place to look is the communication map as well, which sort of, you know, if you have, if you have a concern about mental health, or if you have a concern about this or that, like, it'll tell you sort of the first point of contact for folks. When in doubt, it's always the counselor, I would say.
Angie, what I, what I think I'm hearing is a kind of an overall theme, is the information may be there, but it's difficult to find. I appreciate that, I think, you know, we just converted the website this past summer, and with the new web format, I think what we're finding is, we're trying to make our way through that website and make the information more accessible to people. We've been doing some work on the homepage of the district website initially, and Amy Bizowitz has done a nice job to try and make some of the information a little bit more prominent and relevant when you first visit the homepage. In addition, the next priority that we actually did was the building project website, and we're doing a massive reorganization of that, so that we can provide accurate, up-to-date information to our community members who want that information. So, I think it's great feedback to take a look at how we're organizing and pushing out the information, though I, I've found the same thing about the website, that it's, when we converted, it's just still a little bit clunky.
It is, and even the Wellness website, we have, we've had a senior working on it with us to sort of revamp it and reorganize it, and his internship is now over, but we have a lead on another person who's interested in, in supporting us with that as well. It's just incredibly time-consuming work, and so, how do we make it so that people can sort of find things easily and quickly? Yep, that's our goal, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, committee, thank you.
Yes, just publicly recognize everyone who worked on this, it was a year-long project, it was a lot of work, and with really excellent results, so, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to move on to ongoing business. Okay, our first presentation, we're looking for a possible vote, this is a first read of the revisions to the High School Handbook. So, I believe Larry, Dory will make the presentation, and that will be followed by any questions and concerns and discussion.
All right, so, you know, we did a couple of things, and I, I'll take this opportunity just to explain something new we're trying to do in the packet. You'll see that there's actually a cover sheet to each section of the packet, designed to provide you a very, very brief overview of the topic, along with any requested actions, so you have a sense of that, and then, when there's a recommended action, we're putting suggested motions, so that it's accessible to all of you about how to proceed with that.
When I saw that, I really liked that, it added, adds some structure, it gives some expectation as to what, what you need from me, so, thank you for, for doing that.
So, that's something John and I talked about early on, but it's actually something Diane and I talked about since the beginning of the year, you know, and it was funny, I think Diane and I talked about it five times, and we did it for this package, she said, wow, you did it already, and I said, well, geez, you know, we've been looking at it since the beginning of the year, so, yes. Good, I'm glad you found that helpful, that, that's good to know, because we didn't want to do it if it wasn't, wasn't helpful. So, the, the first part of this in your packet is a memo that I chose to do, kind of outlining some guidelines for roles and responsibilities around the approval of handbooks. This was the first meeting I attended last year, was the discussion of the High School Handbook, and I think there was a lot of confusion about what the role might be in that, and so, I wanted to, and hopefully, this was helpful to you, to understand some historical perspectives around what is the role of a school council and the school principal, versus what's the role of the committee? Your roles as a committee are always around the broad educational policies and goals of the district, and so, where the High School Handbook intersects with those broad educational policies and goals, we always recommend that that is certainly your, your purview. A great example of that last year was when the discussion entailed the seeking to limit AP classes. That is absolutely a school committee-level goal, educational goal of the district, it may not be a written policy, but it certainly is, is a goal, and that would be a school committee-appropriate discussion. If it came to how the handbook might be worded, that would probably not be a school committee revision, because it's really an operational goal. Certainly, if you feel that something's confusing, I think that's great feedback for Larry to be able to take back and make revisions. What we wanted to do tonight, I think historically, we've had two readings of the High School Handbook, you do not need to read the handbook twice, that, that's not a requirement, so there's two possible motions that you make. One might be if you feel that the handbook was close enough that you wanted to move it, even with a couple of recommendations to clean up some language, that's okay, too. But you can move it tonight, vote it, and then that's done, or if you want to see revisions that may be more significant, where Larry has to go back, make some edits, then certainly we can come back next time, for a second read, so those are your two options on the table for this.
Thank you, Peter. I'm, I kind of hope that most of this is going to go over relatively simple, we're not making a lot of changes, we're not making a lot of significant changes, for sure. Many of the changes that we're making are relative to our schedule change next year, and our format around mid-years and final exams, that, that wording had to change, and, you know, a lot of it is just some wording that we've caught up with, that, that it's time. We put a, our new dean of students, Fred Hone, on the Handbook Committee, he oversaw this, and it's, it's great, whenever you have a new set of eyes to look at a, at a document, we have things that have been in the handbook for thirty years that, that, you know, just haven't been changed, because there was no reason, or nobody saw it, you get a new set of eyes in there to take a look at things, and you, you find things. So, I'm just going to very quickly go over the, the outline of, of the changes, the first one's very simple, we're updating the logo, we have lots of different logos over the years, at A.B., we go from, probably won't be able to see this, but this is the handshake logo, okay? Yeah, and the kids decided they didn't like this anymore, so we now, and I think we'll stick with this for a while, we have the pretzel logo, I don't see an example of that in, in, in here, but the pretzel logo is, I think it is written in the packet, you'll see that, so, I hope everyone's okay with that, that, that's a good way to start off. The next thing we need to do is clarify field trips. What we're running into is that when we set up field trips, we collect a certain amount of money for students, and we contribute a certain amount of money for students. The money that we ask from students is, is based on the number of students that are going to commit to go. When students choose that they can't go the, the second day before, the third day before, we're finding out that we don't, we don't have the resources, and have to backtrack to try to support those field trips, so, we are putting in a request that any changes be done a week in advance, in order to receive that refund. The clarification around eligibility for athletics, this has come up in the past, the MIA has a policy that students must be passing four major subjects in order to be eligible to participate in athletics. What those subjects are, are sort of kind of left to the school, but the guideline they use is the, the equivalent of a five-credit English course, if you will, a Carnegie unit. We have had some courses that are in our, our Student Program of Studies that don't really fit that criteria, and we wanted to specify what those courses are and take those courses out, so that students are aware which courses they're carrying, and which courses they need to pass to be eligible. So, this just lists what some of the courses that don't count, and most of those are pass-fail There's redundant section about student athletes, athletics that we just took out. This talks about test postponement, biggest change you've seen here is, we've used the word "test-pomment," however, it's not just about tests, this is our policy, where if a student has three more assessments on one, on one day, they can postpone one of those assessments. We use the word "tests," it's not about tests, assessments conclude, include anything from lab reports to projects, and typical tests as well. So, this just changes that language, so that it, it's clear that any type of assessment fits into our new assessment postponement procedure. The, we clarified language based on school committee policy around the Thanksgiving break, and assessments following the vacations does not include, the, the policy around that does not include the Thanksgiving Day break. Clarified the dollars around senior dues, senior dues went up five dollars, they hadn't gone up any, any amount in maybe eight, ten years. Our Kimball's event is really driving the cost, we, we've, we love going to Kimball's at the end of the year, it's safe, it's an easy way to get everyone there, but their prices have gone up considerably. In order to continue that, we, we did need to raise senior dues by five dollars. Updates on how final grades are calculated, given that we'll knock down formal mid-year and, and final week. When you look at our grading structure right now, you, you have four marking terms that are worth twenty percent, you have a mid-year that's worth ten percent, you have a final that's worth ten percent, okay? You average those together, and you get the final grade. Given that we're not going to have formal, mid-year, and final, each quarter will be valued at twenty-five percent, okay? We had to take out a section of mid-years and finals, that's nothing too tricky, delete a second section around mid-years and finals. All right, happy to announce that we have an update in World Language and National Honor Society to include the Chinese Honor Society, and also, they have included a community service component to this process. We, this is federal law, we had to update the notice of nondiscrimination to include pregnant workers, Fairness Act, and we took out some of the redundant language that was in there as well. Junior privileges, every, not every year, but several years, we go back and forth from awarding junior privileges, and privileges are given to students that have met the academic, behavioral, and attendance requirements, it allows them to leave campus during their free period, they're granted, in, in, in the junior year, some years, we, we've waited the first quarter, some years, we've done it at the beginning of the year, we think for a smoother transition next year, with everything that's going on, we'd like to award those at the beginning of the year. This was a request of, no surprise, a request of the upcoming junior class, so that, that's a decision that we'd like to follow through as well. And updates on the academic integrity procedure, the procedure did not include the, although it, it happens, and it almost happens all the time, we need the teacher to contact the parent as part of the process, and that language was not in the process, so, parent contacting, a teacher contacting parent is now required within the academic integrity That's it.
Adam, go right to questions.
I have one comment and one question. The first comment is, as someone with a degree in technical theater, I'm glad to see that technical theater's been added to the list of academic courses.
Yes.
Because there's a degree in it. The second question I have is around the community service component for the language-based honor societies, how does that community service relate to the larger requirement for community service at the high school?
It, it may or may not relate, to be honest, it's, it's similar to the, the National Honor Society, the, and I'm not going to make anything I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure of, but when students complete the NHS application, or those other applications, they list the community service activity they've been involved in. If you're asking, you know, could they be hours that count towards community service recognition hours, and, and hours that don't count, I don't have an answer to that, I, I, to me, I wouldn't imagine it, it did, I think they could count towards both, but that's usually an application process that's, that's filled out by the student and looked at by the World Language Department.
We just finished a discussion of the website, which reflected on the fact that when there's a lot of information to pull together, it's difficult to pull that together in a way that is accessible for everybody. And as I, you know, looked at the handbook, so, first of all, with respect to these changes, these look like things that, you know, are not really school committee-level, and we should be informed, but I'm fine with all of those.
Not biggies, yeah.
I'm happy to vote it tonight. But if I look at that, the handbook in total, it looks to me like this process has gone on for a number of years without a major revision, and-
Probably fifty.
Yeah, and, and, and so, there are a couple of things that come out of that. One is, I did some readability analysis on some sections of the handbook, so you have some things that read at a ninth-grade level, which would be good, since we start giving it to ninth graders.
Yeah.
And then you have some things that, you know, sort of blow the top off that are in there. I think there's some tension between compliance kinds of language that are in there, you know, we have a section entitled FERPA, unfortunately, Ben Carson is not with us this evening to reflect on what FERPA stands for, and, and I think there are a lot of things to do, so that's a long way to say that I think there really is, you know, the need for a major revision to the handbook, which looks, you know, not just at the question of how we've organized the handbook, but how it relates to other documents, for example, the Program Guide. So, if I'm looking at some of the information around course selection and things like that- that, I'm like, well, why isn't that all in the program guide? Why don't we just move everything about that process there? And then when we redo the handbook, let's make sure that it strikes the tone about what we want the high school experience to be, in that when I looked at the section with respect to extracurricular activities, there's language in there that's almost discouraging with respect, it's like, you're here to learn. And of course, that's job one, but it's not the only job. And the handbook ought to reflect that we value all of these extracurricular activities that we offer in the high school, and that we believe that, you know, the students who take best advantage of the school, you know, not only have strong academic programs, but have other interests that they're serving as well.
Yeah.
So I understand what this ask is. It's a big ask to, you know, start from, you know, ground zero and sort of say, what could we do? But I actually think it's a great opportunity that we can have a handbook as excellent as our high school.
You know, the handbook is an interesting thing because it is actually, in many ways, I think it's a historical document, and there are things that literally have not been changed in years and years and years, just because it doesn't come up. The way we go about it every year is when something comes up that doesn't make sense in the handbook, we write it down and say, we've got to look at this, and then something else doesn't fit, we write that down. It's really reactive. You're right, nobody sits down, opens every single page and says, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense, could we take this out, could we put this in? It's filled with federal laws, it's filled with state laws, it's filled with, you know, local school committee policy, and then mixed in within that, there are a lot of things that we're trying to provide as helpful. You know, the thing about the handbook is, the biggest thing about the handbook, it is the rules we live by at the school, and I think we always focus on and want to make sure those are the pieces and the elements that are in there, and then it becomes almost like a big information guide, and there probably is more information in there that's needed, more information that could be better suited for whether it be the program of studies or online site, so that's a good recommendation.
Michael?
First of all, I want to welcome Nora to the committee, and second is that before I ask the question into those updates, I have a question about procedure for tonight, because this, you know, we're seeing that first read, possible vote, right? So how are we going to determine, you know, what will be the, you know, first read, but we will vote next week, and then what will be vote tonight?
So from a procedural standpoint, if there's a committee member who believes that they want to move to approve the handbook, they would simply read that motion. If there's no one, and then the committee would vote as to whether to approve the handbook or not. There's no requirement that this is a first read or a second read, so there's an option to vote on it, and that's in the agenda, so our requirement is to clearly delineate a possible vote on it. If the motion is made and the move is to approve the handbook, but that fails, then that would go back to the high school for revision and come back for a second read slash vote next time.
I would challenge you that, because, you know, if I think, you know, one item, I need more time, so I would say, I want to hold it. I want to delay to the next week. So why can't we just go?
So Michael, I think if no one makes, you know, we'll make a motion and then, you know, kind of we'll take over from there. So do you have a, do you have a?
Because, because, because if someone made a motion to say, hey, let's move, vote this, and then other members agree, and then, but I disagree, what about that situation?
Michael, Michael, we're not talking about, there's no motion on the floor to discuss, so I would respectfully ask you to hold your comments until we are in a place as a committee where we're discussing a motion that's currently on the floor. There's no motion on the floor. So do you understand the process?
Well, I just disagree.
Okay. Any other comments regarding the handbook itself and any revisions you'd like to see? Paul?
So I'm good with all the recommended changes. I also like that you show the text, you show the changes, and you show the reasoning. So it was very easy for me to follow what you were trying to do. I'm okay if someone would like to vote it today, I'm ready to vote it today, but I know that if we want to hold off for a second read, I'm good with that, too.
Angie?
Yeah, I just want to take the opportunity because you're here, and I have already been asked from parents and families, how is the new grade will be calculated without the midterm and final? And you just mentioned that each quarter is 25%. Can you kind of elaborate, because this is air, so I just want to take the opportunity to clear out the questions, so to, I know many families are going to have that question. How is the 25%? Is that decided by the homework? And how is that the teacher decide how each weight of the assessment, or kind of just, maybe just explain?
Yeah, we're not going to see a lot of change in terms of, you know, there'll be, there'll continue to be assessments, whether they be, whether they're tests, or whether they're projects, or whether they're lab reports, whatever they may be, they'll all carry some value. You look at each marking term, each nine weeks is carrying 25% of the value of that final grade. So, you know, what's going to be absent are two high-stake tests, each worth 10% from that final grade. But the tests and the assessments and the process really won't change that much. Yeah?
Okay, I had one question about the senior class dues. So I was looking at our school committee policy, JQ, on student fees, and it says no student will be denied access to student programs because of inability to pay, and this is, there is a statement in there, in the handbook, that says if there's a financial hardship, you know, come talk to us.
Right.
Do you think that is sufficient to cover, like, someone who needs it completely waived?
Oh, absolutely. We do whatever we need to do. We've had more waivers this year than we ever had in the past when it comes to student dues, and Warren O'Grady, our associate principal, works with students to, you know, whether it's, sometimes it could be, they need a partial waiver, sometimes it may be a full waiver, it's, we meet the needs of the students.
Great, okay. And then my second question on this policy, and it's old, it still says Acton Public Schools and it's from 2012, so we probably need to do a little work updating our own policies, but it also...
That's your policy.
That's our policy. That's our bad. It states that students and student fees and charges, both optional and required, will be listed and described annually in the handbook or distributed in some other written form. And so I'm just wondering if there's, if you do distribute, like, if there's one sheet of paper that you give that kind of lists and describes all of these, or is it embedded throughout the handbook?
We update, we always make sure our fees are accurate in the handbook. We message students all the time around what the fees are. The fees are listed at our website, so, yes, there isn't an extra, you know, an additional one document that shows everything, but, yeah, we message a lot. It's not easy to collect fees from 500 kids unless you message a lot. It's, yeah, so we do. We do a lot.
Okay, so we should probably do some work on our own policy to align it with, yeah, with what the practice is. Okay. Michael?
I want to ask some questions into the updates. Can you go back to the first slide?
The first slide?
My first question goes to the logo. So I just want to know, we changed the logo, we updated the logo, are there like costs associated?
Could you ask that again, please?
Are there like costs, any costs associated with this updating the logos?
Costs?
Like, you know, are we going to spend, you know, like, for example, maybe $10,000 on this, or not, like?
Cost related? Oh, oh, no, no. Our students do it. The logo is simply what you find, you know, and it can be anything from on a athletic uniform, or, you know, we do most of these graphics in-house, so... This logo is actually four years old, should have been taken off this four years ago when we started using the pretzel, but the, there's no cost at all associated with the logo.
Okay, that's good, yeah, that's good.
Thank you, I'm sorry about that.
And also, if we go to the number three, right? So I do understand this is a kind of a driven by the MIA requirement, right?
Yes, yeah.
Right, so did they, you know, publish this requirement last year, or they just, you know, publish it this year and then we have to, we have to do this year?
They publish it every year. What, the way the MIA works is that schools govern themselves, okay? So you'll find that there's a certain set of rules that are laid out by the MIA that everyone has to follow, and then there's additional underlying rules that schools are allowed to include. So sometimes you'll see requirements above and beyond what the MIA is asking for, and sometimes you'll see it stated exactly the way the MIA is asking.
So the MIA is requiring this year?
They have every year.
Oh, they have this every year.
Yes, we just needed to clean up our language and clarify because there were courses that should not have been counted towards eligibility, but we weren't saying it. And that's why we added that in there, so students would be clear.
Did we?
So Michael, I'm going to actually, so you're supposed to be asking for recognition from the chair for each and every question, and so to have you asking three and four questions is not fair to the other member, so I'm just going to ask you to, you know, just, we'll move to draw that, this phase to a close, and I'm going to ask if there's anybody who wants to make a motion at this point. Are you recognizing me? Sorry. I, yes, I am, Tessa.
I moved to approve the 2019, 2020 Acton Bucksboro Regional High School Student Handbook.
Second.
Any discussion? Michael?
I want to hold, you know, the kind number, I want to, you know, postpone to the next week. Not all of them, but some of them.
And what, so I didn't hear any, in the questions and discussion that we just had, I didn't hear any?
Well, you even didn't let me finish my question about the 3B, right? Even, I didn't have a chance to question others, right? And then you want to vote tonight? I disagree. This is a first read. We're running into the rush. I disagree at all.
And so Tessa? Okay, so, so Michael, I'm not trying to cut you off. What I heard you say before is that you didn't understand the process, and then you kept talking about process, so this would be the time to offer any of your questions and concerns about amendments to this handbook that would be so extensive?
I believe that our procedure was that first read, and then the vote happened in the next meeting.
If it is necessary. We could decide, we could, by consensus, decide that we're ready?
Well, you could decide and vote everything tonight, right? But I disagree. I said I disagree.
And so, and so?
Clear.
I'm asking for you to explain to us why, because I didn't hear, if you have something that you, a reason why you want to wait for a second read, we'd love to hear it.
Well, first of all, right, you didn't allow me to finish the questions for all items, right? I didn't get a chance to ask the questions for all items in the public meeting, right? How can I vote? How can I vote on something that, you know, is not clarified to me?
Now is...
Right, that's a number one. The second thing, let me finish. The second thing, you try to, you always try to push rush. I disagree. And the second thing, right? And what's that? The second thing is that, you know, you know, we need more time to think of, right? We shouldn't be rushed. We always rush. This is, you know, I disagree with this procedure change. First read and then possible vote. This is a rush. Why do we want to rush? Right? Those are policies. Those are policies.
Michael, Michael, what is your concern about the handbook that you would like a second read? Can you share that with us?
Well, first of all, you should have let me finish my questions.
I'm giving you the opportunity now.
Right? Can I?
I'm giving you the opportunity now to finish.
Okay, so, so 3B, right?
3B.
Right, 3B. What are those four major subjects? That, did we decide that? I mean, did we make very clear to the students at the beginning of the year so that they could have a chance to prepare and then to get that passed?
Okay, so that's an MIA statement. Student athletes must have passed four major subjects in the prior quarter to try out or participate in athletics. In order to be eligible to try out for a team, you have to be passing those four majors. And we were referring to the majors in A, in terms of what counts and what can be excluded. We, most of our courses meet the MIA requirement. Our electives will meet the MIA requirement. Certainly, all our academic courses will meet the MIA requirement. So that's just simply saying is, in order to start with a team at the beginning of the season, you're required to be passing four. So we look at the last report card. That states the eligibility. Eligibility is always based on the student's last report card, and at the end of the year, it's based on the student's final grades. So if a student at the end of the year was not passing four major subjects, okay, final average, they wouldn't be eligible for fall sports unless they went to summer school and made up that work.
What's the reason behind, you know, removing that learning center? What's the reason behind that?
The reason, it's a pass/fail course, okay? And the committee did not feel it met the spirit of the academic classes that are being offered, that are being expected.
When you say community, what are the community? I mean, is it...
Other schools within the MIA.
Okay, so we are kind of in line with the other schools?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, for those, right?
Yeah.
I can actually offer a little clarification. So Michael, the MIA requires that anything that you count toward eligibility have the same content equivalent as a full-year English course. And so any courses that don't rise to that level should not be counted toward eligibility. The high school had previously given some credit to courses that would not have met that criteria, and they need to correct that, so that's the reason for that change. This is a longstanding rule with MIA, and the high school's just cleaning up language that would have been misleading. And what happened is, I think they actually had some issues this year where students were confused about what could and couldn't count, and so the high school wants to correct this for next year. And then, just to also clarify, another point you made, kind of saying, are we telling students upfront about this change? This handbook doesn't go into effect until next September, so the reason that we're coming forward for approval is to have this language in place and voted for the first day of school that actually goes out to families before school starts in the fall, so that students are very, very clear about what athletic eligibility is before the school year even starts, so we're not surprising them later.
Okay, good. Can we move to the next slide? So, for this number six, right, why do we want to exclude the Thanksgiving break?
Because the Thanksgiving break does not fit into the school committee policy. That's, if you look at the school committee...
Did we update, did we update the school committee policy? I mean, this was before, right? This was there before, right? It hasn't been there for a long time. And then, if the school committee policy has been there for a long time as well, right? Did we, if we didn't update last year, then why, you know, why do we want to remove this? I mean, this is just because we found this kind of, this mistake? By mistake, we kind of didn't exclude the Thanksgiving.
Right.
Right, so it was not actually in line with the policy?
Correct.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to have you ask one more question. Otherwise, we're not going to get out of here until 10, 11 o'clock, okay? You had the packet for a week. We received no emails with questions, so I'm going to ask you to ask just your last question, and then if there's, there is a motion...
Okay, let me tell everyone a story. I, I used to send email, my questions, comments into the school before I came to here.
Michael, Michael, I am not, this is a school committee business meeting. If you ask, if you have a question, ask it, otherwise, we're going to move to a vote.
Well, whatever the question, I didn't question, I didn't have a chance to question. In today's meeting, I disagree to vote tonight. Clear?
Okay. So there is currently a motion on the floor to approve the, the high school handbook tonight. We will take a vote and move on, okay? So all in favor of approving the high school handbook with, I don't believe there were any changes as presented. So approving the high school handbook as it has been presented to us tonight, please state your, please, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, there is one opposition. Okay, the motion does pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
We are moving to item three B. This is an update on the Effective School Solutions program that was presented to us at the last school committee meeting.
So as you're aware from the packet and the memo that Dawn did, you know, we did a lot of consideration of this. I'll let Dawn talk to some of the specific reasons. We presented to you the Effective School Solutions proposal last time in order to bring what is really a partial hospitalization program into the school. I think as we went through this, there were enough questions coming forward, not only from the committee, but we had some questions that we had had that remained as well as some questions the attorneys had sent back to us where we felt that this was not the appropriate time to bring this forward. And it's not that we don't necessarily feel that this is a good solution to bring long term, but what we didn't wanna do is bring a program that was potentially costing $300,000 from a private organization to work with our, some of our most vulnerable students in the district and to do that on a timeline that we weren't comfortable with making that decision and then implementing the program. And I, you know, I said to Dave earlier that, you know, I would rather make a small error than a big one. And it just felt like it, it was getting rushed and not the right time to bring it forward. I don't know, Dawn, do you wanna talk a little bit to any other reasons?
I think you've summed it up really well. I think overall the timing just doesn't feel quite right. I mean, it was outside of the budget cycle and the bid process pushes us out to sometime in July and that's a huge concern for our building administrator. Whoops, he's not there, sorry to call him out that he's not there. To, to get something like that up and running in such a short amount of time when we're trying to open schools. So there were just a whole bunch of logistical types of things. And the one thing that we do know is that, and we come to you every year or every year of the year, every few years, as we look at our continuum and look at gaps, you know, Andrew presented on step earlier tonight. That was a good example of that. And so we will continue to identify areas where we are not meeting the needs of kids to the degree that we'd like to. And we're sending a number of students out and continue to bring thoughts and solutions and, and ideas about that to you.
Questions, John?
I'm very comfortable with the decision to postpone, but I do want to say that I appreciate you having brought this forward, you know, when we have opportunities to do things, you know, and not wait a whole year to lose all of that calendar time. I think we should take advantage of them. So I understand, you know, it's always risky when you do it and, and sometimes those things work out and sometimes they don't. I think the time spent on this is actually well spent as I expect this to, you know, be in front of us again in the future. So I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, I hope we have discussions like this again in the future.
And Angie?
I want to clarify that, so next year when we bring this one back to the budget, will we look at different vendors and look at, go through a whole process in terms of selecting different things? So that's my first question. And the second question, I do have some concern if we are going pushing, propose this as a pilot because as I can see, this program establishes strong relationship with, of the clinic, of the people and the student. And I'm a little concerned that if we're pushing this as a pilot, then for the student that, that they, if we don't like the program, if we're not proceeding a program and then, I'm concerned about the, the emotion and the connection of the students. So I guess my question is, how are we gonna process the next year? Are we gonna have different venues of different selection? Or, and also are we gonna propose a program that as a pilot or we are gonna implement program more permanently next year?
Great questions. I would say that going out to bid in, in, in of itself, that process that we would go through in order to ensure that students with IEPs and students who are in general education can both access the program, that will automatically open the field for other folks who do this sort of work to step forward. So that would absolutely be part of the process. I think there's also a great opportunity for us to engage not only with our towns about future conversations around what these sorts of supports look like and where they belong. And also some of our partners that we already work with like Riverside and Elliott, to, and even William James Interface, to talk about how do we, how do we meet some of our more acute crisis-related needs. We've also, we also are looking at expanding our wraparound services, which you all approved through the budget process. And so we are gonna allocate some of that circuit breaker money to an additional family support partner. As we analyzed our cases a little more, we really felt that, that follow-up and helping our families connect with the services that they need is continuing to be, continuing to be a huge piece of that work as well, that, that this would fill. So we sort of have done that and we've, we've beefed up some programming at the junior high too, but great questions.
Okay, Paul and then Adam.
So I'm, I'm not a big fan of seeing what I, what I consider marketing materials in the packet. And this is, you know, what I saw last time, but when I saw in context of the explanation and, and the presentation, I was on board with the, the niche that it was gonna fill. And I was okay with, with the pilot idea. But if the administration thinks that it, that it's just not the right time, I'll defer to the administration. And, but what I'd like to see is us to try to do something. And, and so I'm, I, I don't mind that we defer, but I would like to see, you know, we've identified an, a, a need and I'd like to see us follow up with, with filling it.
You know, thank you, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's, you know, it's interesting. I think when we talk about a for-profit company, it brings up some, some lines that we have to be careful of. This is actually a company that we approached. They didn't approach us necessarily. And it's because we didn't find any other organization out there that could provide that type of a niche. And it's a level of expertise that we don't currently possess or nor necessarily should we possess. You know, we're not in the profession of supervising clinicians. It, it's just a different world. So that was a niche it, it did fulfill. We certainly did reach out also to Riverside because we work extensively with them to ask if they have any similar programs. They actually don't. They have their own schools that are outside of the schools that fill this need, but it's not in an inclusive environment. And they indicated to us that this was not something that they felt like right now could, could be developed. So we would like to continue to reach out to some of the area partners and see who also has experience in Massachusetts. But knowing that there's another district who's going to be implementing this, it's our opportunity to have some lesson learned from that. I think one of the things we found through the bid process is as we played that calendar out, we wouldn't actually have been able to sign a contract with any company until after July 1st. And that would be the point where they would then start to advertise for staffing to have in place for the fall. And it just did not put that on a reasonable timeline to have the right people in place. As I said, there were a lot of other questions about space and details of the program that also played into the decision, but that was a, a really important one because you need the staff in place.
Did you have a follow?
Yes.
Sure.
I, I appreciate your reflecting on that and, and changing. Thank you.
I, I know what I, you had also mentioned, I'm sorry to do this, but you had also mentioned not wanting to have something in place for students. That's really important to us as well. If you remember in the operating budget for next year, you approved a contract with Esbit Valley to provide wraparound services to families. We're actually, we have the flexibility within the operating budget. We're going to shift some line items and we're actually going to up a tier and increase the number of cases at any one time by 10. So we'll actually have 30 cases now as a district. And we're allocating six of those to the junior high school next year, which had previously not been allocated. Elementary schools will each have three cases. The junior high will have six cases. And we're actually reserving about five cases for kind of as-needed district allocation to wherever we see, you know, a, a significant need as the year goes on. And if you remember, those are not whole year cases. It's 30 cases at any given time. So as students roll out of the program, we can roll additional students and families. Excuse me, it's a whole year? Never mind, I'm gonna back that up. I misunderstood. But what I will say is if we see the need is higher than what we've allocated, we will certainly communicate with you, but we will come back to that and continue to increase that level of service. But I think for right now, it feels about right.
You know, so first of all, I wanna echo what we're hearing from a lot of people around the table here and my support for this type of program. I think anytime we can continue to add to the continuum of services and find opportunities to keep our students in district, that's great. And secondly, I'd like to applaud the administration for making what could have been a, you know, a somewhat difficult decision to have presented something to us, seen the approval sort of from the committee and then to make that decision to, to pull it back because things didn't pan out. And so, you know, I would like to express my appreciation for being able to see the material, hearing the presentation, just to know about this as an opportunity and then to, you know, have had the, the district continue to do its due diligence around what needed to happen in place, to put this in place and to, you know, make that difficult decision to, to pull it back and, and hold off for years. So thank you for that.
Ditto, this is what the kids do. But also I was gonna suggest more wraparound as a follow-up to veering away from this. And I do appreciate the measured way we're approaching this. So I'm glad to hear about more wraparound. And if we had the 300K to spare for this, that was gonna be my suggestion. Why don't we up our, our wraparound services? So thank you for doing that and, and maybe we need more, you know, maybe we'll find that it's really successful, but I'm, I'm glad there's flexibility in the numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, another piece of feedback that I heard from a number of committee members was still that we're not being clear about the actual, what, the continuum of services that we do provide and how those all fit into a bigger plan. And one of the things that Dawn and I have also had that same question in all honesty. And so we're gonna be conducting a program evaluation of kind of our social emotional support system prior to the next budget cycle so that we can actually use that information to come back with recommendations about any gaps that we see and how we can proceed to fill those gaps, but in a more thoughtful way rather than feeling like we're reacting.
So I also want to echo that I really appreciate the decision that the, because I think this, it's a lot of money and by having a chance to review it and it's responsible for our community as well. I just want to add one thing. And when I was looking at it and for the due diligence, will you please consider the, because at the beginning we're talking about the diversity of the staffing. So we want to consider when we do the research, I know that we, I think that's a very important factor as well. And especially for male, for the, for the, for the guy concern, you know? I think there's a lot of, you know, we need a lot of diversity in terms of be able to connecting with the kids. I just want to add that to the, when, when you guys do the research.
That's great.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There is no vote requested tonight, so we'll just move on. I, I'm gonna have like this goal in my head that maybe we'll get out of here like quarter to 10 or something. So we'll keep moving on. So we are scheduled to vote. This is on the recommendation to appropriate FY19 funds to, finally, to the capital stabilization fund. This has been talked about all year and the day has come. So I will turn it over to Dave.
Thank you. Those are my first comments. This is the culmination of something we've been talking about since pretty much the beginning of budget season. And so here we are. I have a short PowerPoint. No, no I don't because we've been talking about this so long that I did a brief memo for you. And where we are right now is that both towns have voted to establish a capital stabilization fund. It's, it's there. We've identified, we, we've placed it on, on the district's books and we're ready to go. And as I said in the la, at the last meeting when I presented the third quarter results, it looks like we should be able to follow through on what has been out there again for five months or so. The plan to put a million dollars into, to fund this new vehicle with a million dollars, the purpose being of course to help to, to augment the funding and, and secure the success of the, of the capital improvement plan that Peter talked about earlier. So it's, it's my recommendation that, that the district, that the committee follow through, the district and committee follow through with this. I'll take questions if there, if there are any left that have not yet been answered, but you have suggested wording in the, in the memo that you got from me.
Okay, and I'll just remind members, this, this does require a two-thirds majority vote. Paul, did you have a question?
No, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. I'll, I'll move to transfer from E and D reserves the sum of a million dollars to the capital stabilization fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I didn't, I did not ask for, I'm sorry, you're right. I did not answer comments.
Every time it's like we try to push, right? Why do you want to do this, right? Why do you want to always want to, oh, okay, so someone make motion and then let's vote?
Michael, did you have a comment you wanted to make on the motion?
I just don't like this. I don't like this chat.
Michael, did you have a comment on the motion?
Yes, I do. So Dave, I have a quick question. So after we transfer this one million dollars from E and D to this stabilization fund, what will be the, you know, the percentage left in the, we're, we're, because we supposed to, you know, maintain the between four and the, four and the 4.5 percent, right? So what will be the, because, you know, right now it's, it's going to drop after we move this, you know, one million dollars, right? What will be the, what will be the percentage so after this transfer?
Okay, so as, as I said, and it is in, in the memo, the certifications take place on July 1st each year. So the, so the certified amount from July 1st, 2018 was four million and change and 4.6 percent. So what we're, what we're projecting is we will still, we should still land in the targeted range between four and 4.5 come July, come this July 1st. This, this transaction in and of itself is irrelevant where we land. It's where we're going to be when it gets certified as of July 1st and I think we're gonna be in the targeted range.
Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Dave?
So the, a reminder, thank, first of all, thank you. This vote needs to be communicated to both town select boards within seven days. There's one potential issue that remains. I'm pretty good at math and so I've counted 45 days from today because, because both select boards have 45 days in which to call a special town meeting. That day happens to be July 7th. I didn't think of this until I was at Masbo last week. July 7th is after June 30th, the day on which the authority to transfer E and D expires. Now, we can argue semantics and luckily when I thought of this at Masbo, both the director of the Bureau of Accounts and the associate commissioner of DESI were there. They both suggested that the easiest way around this is to obtain a letter from both boards waiving the 40, 45-day period. That seems to be a, a common sense thing anyway because if they're going to call a special town meeting, they would probably, they would need to call it before June 30th anyway. So I think as a, as a courtesy that goes both ways in the process, and again going back that this has been out there for, for five months' time, just so there's no confusion as to the authority to make the transfer in FY19, I think that when we send the announcement to them, we should make a, a formal request of them to send a letter waiving the 45-day period.
Do we have suggested language? Is that something we can?
Yeah, Dave is working on that. We'll have that along, you know, we'll actually give them not only the letter notifying them, but we'll actually give them suggested. but we'll actually give them suggested language that they can just sign off on, you know, take a vote, sign off, and be able to send back to us. You know, interestingly, even if we had anticipated this, there's nothing we could have done about this, because Boxborough just voted this at town meeting. There's no possible way that the committee could have done this transfer earlier. So we probably would have been in this position anyway. So, you know, we'll have that language following this meeting, and because we have an affirmative vote now, we'll prepare, you know, the letter notifying the towns and also, you know, a letter that they can send back to us having signed off.
This is very exciting, actually, because it's a long time coming, and it actually, you know, it's real. This $21 million capital improvement plan is on its way to a great start. So, thank you, everyone. I'm going to speak really briefly to the summit of evaluation in your packet. It's not, there's no vote required or anything. Just a reminder that your written evaluations are due to me on the 28th, and I just wanted to make a very quick call out for public input, so anyone watching on TV, or if you hear, if you bump into somebody in the public, and just remind them to, anyone who would like to email input is welcome to do so from the public. Also, when you're filling out the evaluation form, I want to just, I want to just mention something about making evaluative statements. So we are evaluating the performance of the superintendent, and it is checking off some boxes. It does involve that, but there's a great deal of space that I've created for you to write. And when you make evaluative statements, you need to back them up with evidence. Saying great or not so great is not as helpful as saying why you think they did a great job with something, or someone did a job that wasn't really up to your standards or expectations. So I would just encourage everybody to really kind of think a little deep, a little more deeply about why you're making an assessment on the different standards that we've asked you to consider. So I'm looking forward to getting all of your written assessments by the 28th, and I will, I will keep reminding you of like a countdown, I think. I'll just kind of send you emails until you ask me to stop, or the 28th comes, whichever's first. So I'm looking forward to writing the composite, which I will present at our June meeting, and I'll take Angie's question.
We just need to learn analytical writing.
To learn what?
Analytical writing. Just to clarify, so if the, for the PUPB, do they have like a form? And if not, and do they send it to you, or how they, just want to clarify that?
The form electronically should be sent to me with a CC to Beth.
No, public.
Oh, the public, they should send an email.
Just you?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, CC you?
And CC to Beth.
CC to Beth, okay.
All right, moving on, we have a school building committee update on the agenda. I don't see Mary, so. So do you want to take that on, or do you want to just get?
I can give that tonight, and then we'll see if someone else who's on that committee wants to take it over from there on. So, school building update, yeah, you know, I think old habits die hard, clearly. So, school building update, you know, a couple of big things that have taken place since our last time with you. Last week, it feels like about six weeks ago, but it was actually last week, we hosted MSBA at the Parker Damon Building. And, you know, with some of the reservations that we had heard from MSBA around the concept of a twin school or two elementary schools within a combined facility, we invited the MSBA staff out to join us at the Parker Damon Building. I think one of the things we heard from MSBA was maybe a belief on their part that somehow that wouldn't sustain itself as a way of delivering education. And so we brought them in and we showed them the plaque, you know, from, I think it was 2004 when Parker Damon Building opened, and saying, yes, we have maintained two separate, very distinct educational programs toward the facility. Went and talked about where it is efficient, and also showed them how we had learned some lessons from building that first of the twin schools, and how we use those lessons to inform the current educational design of the building. I think that was very helpful. You know, I still know that the idea of building a consolidated, building with two separate programs is still not something that the MSBA board typically does, and so it's outside of that comfort level. I'm hoping that, you know, as we proceed, I haven't heard a level of comment that would lead me to believe we're not going to proceed forward with this. I've certainly heard that we've addressed the concerns. The one piece of feedback that I was very encouraged by that MSBA provided us at that meeting was that they indicated the floor plans for the building had evolved significantly and made a lot more sense. And that was the number one reason why they had chosen to delay us, was the development of those floor plans. So I'm encouraged by that and looking forward to our next meeting. We are scheduled for June 6th, 5th, Wednesday, June 5th, at the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee Meeting, which is a subcommittee of their entire board, to continue to discuss the floor plans with them. So we're preparing for that meeting. Simultaneous to that, yesterday, we had a joint meeting of some of our staff, including the architects and the project managers, and Mary Brolin also attended as the Chair of the Building Committee, with all of the various acting departments that will be involved in the different approvals required for the building project. The purpose of that was to give all, each department an overview of where the building process is right now, give them a sense of the design, the floor plan, talk about the wetlands, talk about all the different questions and concerns that they may have initially, so that we have a sense of that and know exactly how we need to approach the permitting process through the various boards. So that certainly is underway. It was a good, positive meeting. We'll continue to have discussions with them very closely as we proceed into the various design stages that we have. So that's really the update. As I said, we're also doing a redesign of the website in order to better communicate with the public. We hosted two different community forums in Boxborough to get feedback on the preschool. You know, we had fairly low turnout. We had a total of five community members at those. We'd like to see more community members at the different forums we do. But it was five parents who learned a lot about the project and can go and continue to communicate. Even if we're talking to one person, it's an opportunity to talk about what we're doing with the project and keep the word out there. We did not hear a lot of specific concerns about moving the preschool, but again, it was only five families, so it's hard to judge that. But we did indicate that, you know, the plan right now, in order to keep up with the increasing enrollment at Blanchard, our intent is that we would be moving the preschool program into the consolidated building, which certainly has a whole variety of benefits in terms of accessibility for students. So that's where we stand right now. I wanted to give you that update, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Michael?
I know that, because we talked about this before, but I know that MSBA, they postponed this is because they want to say a plan that two schools merge to the one school in the future. I just want to make sure that we are making very clear to them that we're not going to do that. We're going to keep them separate. Because, you know, we don't want to imply or to commit into this, you know, the one school thing, right? So we don't want to make them, you know, to think it's possible, it's impossible, right?
Well, so what's interesting, it is absolutely our intent, and we have been very clear with them, that we're maintaining two separate programs. When you look at the labels for the floor plans, everything on the second floor says Douglas Kindergarten, or, excuse me, Gates Kindergarten, Gates First Grade, Gates Third Grade, Gates Music. It's very, very clearly labeled, and the third floor all says Douglas. However, the MSBA has required us to show them how we would organize the building if we decided to consolidate it into one school later. We have to do it, it's an academic exercise. We have no intent of doing that, but we'll certainly do anything they ask us to do to be able to get the highest reimbursement rate we can.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to a brief update from ALG and BLF. So, do you want to take this call for ALG?
Well, I was 15 minutes late, so.
I can jump in.
Yeah, why don't you take that?
Okay. So ALG did meet, gosh, I don't even know what date that was, sometime last week. And so they start their new cycle, like now. So we went over the charter and the ground rules, and so it was a little bit, you know, it's a little bit strange, because we're on a different cycle. So I'm actually thinking that we should probably appoint who's ever going to be the liaison to ALG sooner rather than later, and not wait till like the summer workshop or later when we do appoint all of our subcommittees, just in case, so that person can be, hit the ground running from, and be on the same cycle that ALG is, even though it's not our cycle. So I don't know, if there's any feedback, you can email me on that, but I'm just thinking to align those two things, so they make more sense. And BLF, did they, did BLF meet?
We're meeting on Tuesday.
On Tuesday, okay, great. All right. Okay, Beth has provided, oh, this is the school committee member list, okay, that's not what I wanted to look at. In your packet, you will find a list of meetings for the year, which we finalized. I'll find it myself. We added back a few meetings because we found that we were having to overload meetings, and which is why they were starting to go really late into the evening. So you'll find that there's more this year than there were last year, so just please put these in your calendar, these are confirmed. And I also want to highlight that the annual workshop is scheduled and confirmed for Tuesday, July 16th at 5:00 PM. It will run until about 9:00, and we'll focus, we'll have a presenter, and, you know, this is an annual event, it's a dinner, a working dinner, and it'll be, it'll start the year off for us in a nice way. So I'm looking forward to that.
Diane?
I notice we always have XX next to not knowing when the Boxborough Town Meeting is, but I'm fairly certain that it's the off week, which means that, lucky me, I'll get to celebrate my birthday on the very first night of Boxborough Town Meeting, which I believe will be May 11th.
Thank you, Tess. Okay, statement of warrants. There are six warrants on the agenda. I believe it's being circulated. If you haven't signed it, please do so. We have vendor warrants 19-023 and 19-024 PR in the total amount of $2,644,534, and student activity fund warrants 19-023 from Blanchard, and 19-023, and 19-024 from the senior high, in a total amount of $67,574.14. And finally, payroll warrant P1924 in the total amount of $2,659,469.57. Oof, okay.
Diane? I just wanted to comment for the benefit of the people who might be watching, that the school committee received electronic copies of these warrants yesterday, so that if people saw warrants getting signed apparently very quickly, they should understand that that's because school committee members could review those electronic copies yesterday.
Okay, thank you, John. There is a consent agenda on the back of your, the back part of the agenda. So I will read these over, and the way this works is that if you have any concerns and you want to pull the item off of the consent agenda, just say hold. Yes?
I just want to make one statement, that I did not receive any feedback on the policies that are listed.
Okay. Okay. I'm not finding this. Oh, it's here, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, the minutes of the 5/9/19 school committee meeting. Okay, policy DK on reserves, policy DP on the capital stabilization fund, and policy BDA on school committee annual organizational meeting. Okay? So we are holding the minutes, and we are holding B free, so policy BDA. Did you get that, Beth? Okay, so we're going to vote on what's left of the consent agenda, which are two policies, DK and DP. Do I hear a motion?
Someone?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we have some, we have some changes to the minutes of the May 9th meeting. Beth, did you want to address those?
Sure, I received a couple of comments on page two. The first sentence that has been posted reads like a check toward that senior internships had the last stage rule on Thursday, period. On Friday, senior participated in the service, period. Second suggestion is on page three of, I don't have a ticket on the other. The next one is on page four, under 6.11. It's going to say, this would be a way to signal that we would rather see MTL set above the limit, period. The suggestion has been made that it changed to be, this would be a way to signal that we would rather see MTL, see MTL, see MTL second upper limit. See, to raise the limit, sorry. Way to see MTL raise the limit on the, second.
Yes.
And then the last suggestion was on page five, under consent amendment. We're just holding the policies. It's going to say what it says there, John's comment. It's been proposed that it be done at the creed, but explained that we need these policies in place for the Department of the PP. Well, members have some interest in revising the policies, either like council committee that there was not enough time to properly revise the policies for the CDO. He suggested that the policies should be approved and renewed, and don't be approved, that's.
Okay, any discussion on the motion, or the changes that Beth, thank you, Beth, for reading those out, by the way. Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
We did move.
We did, we did move.
No, we didn't.
I'll move to accept the changes.
Oh, that's right, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
And then I'll second that.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get it.
John moved.
Paul moved. Okay, we're all getting punchy here.
Take your glasses off.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, so now, John, did you want to speak to file BDA?
Yes. You know, I understand that, you know, this policy subcommittee wasn't able to meet to have a discussion of this issue generally, and this is very timely, because we welcomed Nora to our table tonight. So one of the things that will happen from time to time is that at the first meeting following the acting and Boxborough Town Elections and Town Meetings, we'll have somebody who will be literally in their first meeting. And from my view, it's not reasonable that the very first thing that they should do before perhaps, I mean, because Nora's literally been a member for 48 hours. So to put somebody in position to say, well, let's vote on the officers of the committee having not any orientation or any discussion or anything, seems unreasonable. So we could, of course, go ahead and do that, but that would essentially disenfranchise Nora, in my view. And I think the intent of this language here that said, we really want to rethink how we do the transition anyway, in terms of what goes on, because the other thing that we've discussed tonight is the fact that the superintendent's evaluation is sort of one of the culmination of the chair's activities. So it makes sense, actually, that the existing chair continue through that evaluation process, and then we bring in the new chair. So the specific proposal, you know, in the policy is August 1st. But if that's the idea, then we certainly don't need a new chair for the next meeting. We could certainly move the vote that, you know, is scheduled for tonight until that next meeting. We could still have some discussion. I see no reason why we wouldn't have a discussion about people who might be interested in being officers and aspects of this policy. But my suggestion and my reason for holding this policy is to say that we could approve this policy as is. I think it's a good change, you know, to move out the transition, but one of the things that probably should be discussed is whether the policy should become inherently flexible with respect to having this vote occur either at the first or second meeting at the discretion of the committee. Because the alternative to that, you know, if you want to move it, is to suspend policy, which then requires a two-thirds vote on the part of the committee, as opposed to simply giving the committee in perpetuity latitude savings either to a first meeting or your second meeting. Because some years, of course, we might not have anybody new at the table, it'd be perfectly fine to have the organizational meeting first, so. So I'm, you know, happy to have whatever discussion people want to have around this policy, I guess, next, and then we can vote it or not, depending on where that goes.
So can I? So, can I, I guess I would like some clarity around how you think two weeks is going to be helpful for a new member in this regard, making a decision about leadership on this leadership team?
I will certainly grant that, you know, two weeks or three weeks is not a ton of time to assess that. But 48 hours just seems inherently wrong. So, either, you know, we essentially vote to disenfranchise, you know, or we simply push back to the next meeting, which, in my view, there's no harm in doing.
Tessa?
As someone who entered the committee on arguably the craziest school committee meeting ever, I wish you had brought this up last time when we looked at this as a first read. I mean, now it feels like it's disenfranchising everyone else who expected that we were going to have a vote on this tonight, because this wasn't brought up as a discussion point when we looked at it the first time. I hear what you're saying. I don't really think two weeks makes a big difference. You're taking in an awful lot when you're a new member, especially when you're joining for the very first time, as opposed to rejoining the committee. There's certainly a lot to take in, and I think that just like new members don't participate in the evaluative process of the superintendent, I think that we're not really disenfranchising them. We're showing them what happens. And I think I certainly have gained a lot from watching these discussions now for two years. First, as one who was maybe disenfranchised when I first joined, and once after I had been here for a year. And, you know, it's really hard. Your perceptions of committee members are going to change constantly, maybe from meeting to meeting. And, you know, there's 11 of us. So, while I think it's important that Nora feel included in this vote, you know, I just, I don't know that two weeks is going to make any difference. I think it's very hard. What I like about this policy is that transition period allows for the current chair to get the next chair up to speed on the way things are going, and they can work collaboratively, possibly, on the summer meeting and workshop. And I think it allows for a smoother transition of power.
Anyone else? Adam?
First of all, John, I think as a member of Boxborough and someone who went through this very thing last year, I appreciate the sentiment. I think about this a couple ways. First of all, pragmatically, as a member from Boxborough, and it is the Boxborough members who are in this odd position, whether or not I vote yes, no, or abstain, in reality, as a single person with only one vote on this committee, it doesn't really matter. And I'm not one to say that the vote doesn't matter. But, I mean, as a new person, I could equally abstain as I could vote for someone, because I didn't feel included in that. And then, as I hear Tessa's comments, you know, I think that what's actually more important and the reason behind a lot of this language change is around making that continuity of chairpersonship of the committee as smooth as possible. And so, I would rather have a new committee member abstain from a vote in order to give a new chairperson an extra two weeks of preparation. I think that that two weeks on that end of the chairpersonship is more beneficial than it might be for someone who, you know, is still going to be drinking from the fire hose two weeks from now.
Amy.
I was going to say exactly the same thing, probably more eloquently, but, yes. No, I agree. I think having more time for the transition is really where I think the value is. But I'm certainly not interested in disenfranchising anyone.
And I'm just going to add one more thing, that this is not just about taking a policy and, you know, setting aside for a while. This is actually in Section 1F of the regional agreement. It requires us to elect, end of quote, "at the first regular meeting of the school committee following the latest town election each year." So, we would be in violation of the regional agreement if we did this. And I, you know, I'll just throw that out there as a point of information for members to consider. And then, with that, I'll ask you if you do want to make a motion, or if you don't.
Well, so, what we're actually discussing right now, of course, is the policy itself and where that's going to go. And I think the point you raised about the regional agreement actually didn't seem reasonably compelling. It would seem to be that, you know, violating the regional agreement without really a good reason to do that probably is an issue. So, but the other thing that was discussed in here, that the policy doesn't address, and I would actually like to see us approve this policy tonight, so I'm not actually asking that it be changed now. But I would like the committee to talk about the issue of control of the workshop. So, you know, it was suggested that perhaps that the workshop would be done jointly. There are arguments, of course, why you would want the outgoing chair to run the workshop. There are arguments why you'd want the incoming chair to run the workshop. So, I'm hoping that we can have some discussion that would provide guidance to whoever the incoming chair and the outgoing chair is, so that they would behave in a way that was reflective of the desire of the committee.
Are you asking for that discussion to happen now? Okay. Then I'm going to respond. I think that, I agree with you. I think that is a really important point. I think putting the mandate that the two, the incoming and outgoing chair plan it together jointly, I mean, do you see a problem in having that kind of a leadership during, I mean, the planning is the most important piece. Do you see any kind of a problem with, I'm trying to think about like when I did it. About... Oh, God.
So glad that I sat next to you this evening. We had this conversation, actually, in the policy subcommittee around, you know, your committee meeting, around what we wanted to detail in this policy. And, you know, we thought that, your suggestion came across the table in saying, "Well, should we talk about who's planning that, who's sort of leading that transitionary period?" And, you know, we felt that we wanted to leave this purposefully unspecified, because there are some situations that we may not be considering now, where we may want the incoming chair to run that workshop. And there may be other situations where we want the outgoing chair, or there may be situations where we want them to work together. And we felt that that would be best sort of detailed in the moment, as opposed to codifying it in the policy. Because, you know, there could be a time where we've got an outgoing chair who's also leaving the committee, or we've got an outgoing chair who's leaving the committee and not a great situation. And we just wanted to have the policy provide the guidance around the fact that it's a transitionary period or transitional period, and not really detail out the rest of the details for that.
I think because of when terms end, that what Adam said is particularly important, because we're never going to be able to predict when the person who is chair might be at the end of their term and may not have been reelected, if they wanted to be. You know, and I think that there's a million situations like that, where especially because we do represent two towns and we do all end our terms on different dates, that being purposefully vague is probably really important. Well, we could discuss it as, you know, members of the committee, once the chairmanship has been changed and what expectations are, I think that that's the best way to handle.
So, Nora, did you have your hand up?
My first comment? So, just in terms of me being new and taking part in voting in the new leadership, I don't think that two weeks would make a difference for me. I'm comfortable abstaining if the committee feels like that would be most helpful. But I do, even though this is my first meeting and I haven't been here a very long period of time, I have spent a long time preparing to be on the committee and speaking with people and watched all of your videos. And I think I told someone earlier today that I spent Super Bowl Sunday watching school committee meetings, as I was trying to decide whether or not I wanted to run. So, I do feel familiar, and I do feel comfortable. I'm also not adamant that I must vote if it felt like it made sense for me to abstain.
Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that I don't feel, you know, because this year will be, you know, transition from Acton to the Boxborough, right? So, this, and I don't think it's fair to, you know, have this transition period, you know, this year, because, you know, why cannot be, you know, from Acton to Acton when we do that year, right? Why do we want to, you know, we are small town, right? Smaller than Acton. It doesn't mean that, you know, you could do this kind of thing. I don't think it's fair to us.
Tessa?
Michael, I don't see it that way at all. To me, I think that there being, I don't look at, I look at our committee as a whole as very collaborative. And so, yes, we're talking about a transition from Acton to Boxborough and whatever, but I don't look at it as sort of a power grab in terms of that. I think that the chairmanship is a huge job, and as much time as could be spent preparing a new chair to take on that role and the expectations that come along with it, I think is helpful, rather than it being something where the new chair isn't, is not recognized or, you know, rendered unable to do the things that a chair needs to do in that transition period. I think it just makes sense as we're wrapping up business. And I can say this too, as having been a previous PTF president, we cycle through the same thing also, you know, at the end of every year. And it's sort of an abrupt end. So, with PTF, you usually end without any meetings left in the end of the year. That's not the case with the way we do this. And so, it does set up sort of a, you know, uncomfortable thing, where we still have a couple of meetings left in the year, or the school year, if you like to think about it that way. I guess it's our fiscal year. But it seems strange to change over with those meetings left, if that makes sense. I mean, it makes sense for us to organize and arrange a vote, because now we are a whole new committee, now that people have joined and been elected. But it doesn't line up with the fiscal year necessarily. So, to me, the transition period just eases that.
And I will add that every, school committees do this like a bunch of different ways. Some reorganize in January, some in August. It's all over the map. So, is there a motion on the floor to approve this? Sure.
Yeah, I think, you know, if it just to think of, you know, the transition from one chair to another chair, we've said makes sense. But, you know, but, you know, from the Acton to the Boxborough, this is kind of a sensitive timing. I would say that. I still, you know, think, you know, we should not do this year. We can postpone to the next year. For that reason, I'm not going to, you know, approve this one.
Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
I finally beat Paul, and now I... Go ahead, Tessa.
Move to approve file BDA.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any, are you opposed? Okay, one opposed. Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes. There should be music or something now, because we're... We are moving to item six, which is our annual organizational meeting. I'm going to let Peter take over, and I will move, I guess, do I move seats? Usually, there's no one up there but the superintendent, so. Okay with me sitting here?
All right. So, the way the process for this works is governed by Robert's rules. But essentially, I'm going to take over this portion of the meeting. And what I will do is I will go through the various positions. We'll take nominations. We, if there's a nomination, there's a second. We'll go through, we'll collect various nominations for the positions. At that point, we'll offer a period of time to discuss, and then there'd be a vote to approve. So, what I'd like to do is begin the FY '20 Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee election. Nominations are now open for the office of chairperson.
I nominate Tessa McKinley.
All right. Tessa has been nominated, and there's a second. Are there any other nominations for chairperson? Okay, seeing none. We have a, Tessa's been nominated, and there's been a second. All those in favor, Tessa McKinley is chairperson for FY '20. Please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All right, I declare that the motion has passed. Tessa McKinley will serve as the chair for FY '20. I'm now going to, I'm not, I'm turning the meeting back to Diane at this one, right? Because we just voted the policy for transition. Right. So, I'm turning this back to Diane to finish this. Yes, for everything.
I was actually really tempted to bring my boxing gloves, but I did. Okay, nominations are now open for the office of vice chairperson for Acton. Are there any nominations for vice chair for Acton? Maya?
I nominate Diane Baum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. John?
I nominate Angie So.
Angie So has been nominated for vice chair for Acton. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Adam seconded. Any further? Paul?
I'll nominate Amy.
Okay. Amy Krishnamurthy has been nominated for vice chair. So, we'll have to wait and see. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so nominations are closed. I will now, so I think each of the, those have been the nominees, should be recognized and then speak on their behalf as to why they want this. So, am I supposed to go first, or should I go last?
Given that you're a nominee, you should probably cede the chair to someone.
I should, that's a fair point. So, Tessa, you're up.
Diane, would you like to go first, since you were nominated first?
Okay. So, the, having been chair for a year, I recognize the importance of vice chair as a position that's not only important in the cases that the chair cannot fulfill his or her duties, but also there's kind of untapped potential in the role. And I really would very much be pleased to and honored to be elected to the position of vice chair. There are many things I would like to do and get done. I would, it would be a great pleasure to work with Tessa. So, if you would so honor me with your vote, I would very much appreciate it.
Angie, would you like to go?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for the recognition. And I would, as a new member and being on the board for one year, this would be a great honor and opportunity for me to serve. And I think, as in the past year, I think I represent a different, diversify from our community and bring out different voices. So, if you honor to give me the vote, I will be very happy to serve. Thank you.
All right, Amy?
Can I decline the nomination? I think that I would prefer not to take on that extra work. Thanks.
All right, well, discussion? Anybody want to weigh in? Can I say something? As having served as vice chair this year, I think that I gained a lot of information from Paul, serving as vice chair, because he's been on the committee for quite a long time. I think that there is some importance to experience on the committee in order to support the chairmanship. But while there's certainly room to learn and learn more about things, I know that I learned a tremendous amount from Paul as someone who had been on the committee. And I do think that as someone who has only served two years on... who has only served two years on the school committee and, um, that, that there is an importance to being able to reach out to people that have been through things or that have experienced things or that may have historical perspective on something because there is always so much to learn as a committee member at, at all. So that's just the perspective I'll share, that, that there is some importance, I think, to experience when, when talking about, um, leading a committee. Maya?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I appreciate, um, e- everyone's work and efforts as they approach the many duties and responsibilities and I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge and recognize like the tremendous work that you've done this year, Diane, to get us on track from a very tumultuous time and I thought that you did so with like incredible grace and a level of preparation and, um, just that elevated the work that we, um, got to do and I, I, for that reason and for, for, with that experience in mind, I think that, um, it would be great to have you as, as vice chair because not, the seniority, I think, goes a long way, but also the experience as chair that you have had this year and the amount of, um, you spoke of an untapped potential for vice chair and I would be very, um, I know that you're very hungry for the work that happens here and I've, I think that's been very palpable throughout the year and I would be excited to see what you can bring to this position and, um, I, I definitely think we should all try to support each other in these ways, but, um, it's, it's testament to the work you've done and it's not a slight to anybody else and thank you so much.
Michael?
I, I would say that, you know, I would like to say, you know, we can give the new people the chance instead of just to, you know, cause, as everyone, um, when they are in this committee, so, uh, everyone wants to grow, right? So, uh, why cannot we give the people a chance to grow instead of just, you know, uh, re-electing, you know, um, the chair to vice chair and then, you know, and then that's your, you know, uh, the same thing happen, you know? I, I would say that, you know, let's give, uh, the new people to grow, other people to grow, so, thank you.
Angie?
I also actually want to take the opportunity, um, to thank Diane for, uh, for your dedication and time in the past year was, in the past year with the superintendent transition, new building project, new start time, you really took the role and our, um, student had a phenomenal year as you presented in the town meeting and even just yesterday, just one, another good news, which our music education program named one of the, the 2019 best community for music education in the nation. So, I really want to congratulate AB and I also, um, as, um, the National School Board Association defines, every school community mission is to continuous improvement in student achievement. I just want to thank you for your leadership in the past year and, uh, for the vice chair and, uh, I love the opportunity, but I really also admire that the, for the experience that you bring, so I, I actually will, will support that, uh, if you were the vice chair as well. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, because I think you guys have some information that Tessa might not have, that if there is more than one nominee, which there is in this case, you've got two, they, you vote in order of the nomination and the first nominee to get a majority approval is elected and the remaining nominees are not voted on. So the first vote would be for Diane since she was the first person nominated. Yes or no? If she gets a majority, she is it. If she doesn't, then the vote moves to the second nominee, which would be Angie. Thanks.
Is there any further discussion? Paul?
I mean, so I like both candidates for different reasons and so, um, no matter how the voting goes, I'm going to, uh, vote yes for both, so.
Alright, so, does someone, do, does someone have to move it? Yes? Okay. Alright, so we're voting on, all those in favor of Diane Baum being the vice chair from Acton. Please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, so one abstention. So that was, so that's a majority. So, so Diane is elected the new vice chair of the, uh, school committee.
Thank you, everyone. Nominations are now open for the, um, office of vice chair from Boxborough. Do I hear any nominations?
I'll nominate Adam.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. We will vote on Adam Klein for vice chair from Boxborough. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. What, one more? Oh, sec-, oh, that's right. So I knew that it was in my mind and I'm, okay. So, um, do, Beth, we do this in the same way that we've done, yeah, so are there any nominations for secretary of the school committee? Paul?
I nominate Beth Pedder.
Do I hear a second? Was that you, Amy, who seconded? Okay, alright, are there any other nominations? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, Beth. Yes, for much gratitude, yeah. Oh, did I take it? I wrote on it, sorry.
I was waiting for you.
Okay, so, um, I just, I wanted to, um, point out in the FYI section that there is a QPR, a suicide prevention training on the thirtieth and in the Acton library. Um, also just to, uh, remind everyone that, um, Wednesday, June nineteenth is the last day of school and that is a half day, is that correct? Okay, it's Thursday schedule, okay. And again, um, congratulations to Dawn. Did you have anything to add?
No, just the, uh, invitation to the annual retirement celebration. Um, you know, these are a group of educators who have, many of them dedicated almost their entire lives to Acton-Boxborough and it's a wonderful way for us to be able to recognize and send them off in style, so, uh, you're all invited. I think Karen Call had sent that along to everyone, but there's an RSVP process and, uh, if you're interested, we'd encourage you to attend. It's Wednesday, uh, excuse me, uh, May thirtieth, it's, May thirtieth, three fifteen PM. It's a Thursday. It is at the, and I've, um, Wedgewood Pines Country Club in Stowe, yeah.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Michael, I just saw your hand, I'm so sorry.
It's, uh, June nineteenth, the last day of the school year?
June nineteenth, last day.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Okay, all in favor? Thank you and good night. Thank you and good night.